All right. I'm Mayor Matt Girdon, called the October 6, 2025 City Council Meeting for the City of Somersworth to order. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Pepin.
Yep.
Vincent.
Yep.
Gibson.
Here.
Parity Cottenzero.
Here.
Micho.
Yeah.
Witham.
Here.
Goodwin.
Here.
Cameron.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson will lead the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the alphabet which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indikina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabuck, the people who have stewarded Indikina throughout the generations. Item four on the agenda are any scheduled public hearings. We have one this evening. First, I'll open the public hearing for the amended version of ordinance 2525, which is to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Section 14 Historic District by adding exempt activities, which, if approved in its current form, would be a housekeeping item to update language around where to find the district boundaries for the historic district and would refer directly to a map rather than written boundary language. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the amended version of ordinance 25-25? Anyone who wishes to speak? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 25-25. Next up, I have item five, which is comments by visitors. Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speakers shall not enter into debate with any person, the mayor, city council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Thank you. If you could state your name and the ward in which you live. Good evening.
Kimberly Schoen, I'm in Ward 1, and I'm speaking, and I don't know if I'm in the right spot, but I'm going to speak against the tax exemption that I think is 28.
Yeah. Make sure.
All right. Mic's not on. 28 Green.
You may have to repeat what you said just.
So I'm Kimberly Schoen, I'm in Ward 1, and I am speaking against the tax exemption that I think is on the agenda tonight for, it's 28 Green, I call them 85 Elm, for the apartment building. It is a 59-unit apartment building. It has been approved by the planning board. I did attend that meeting and also spoke against the project at that meeting. I understand tonight the only issue is not the parking, which is concerning, is not Fayette Street, which is concerning, but is the tax exemption. So let me quickly do some numbers for you. The Creamery, which is the old building that they are proposing to tear down, the Shabbat Creamery, is currently assessed at $573,900. That means its taxes currently are $10,167 per year. The folks purchased that building in September of 2024 for $465,000, so they purchased it under value. There are 59 units in the apartment building proposed. The average rent that they anticipate is $2,000 or more per unit. That equals $118,000 per month in income for that building. Now, I recognize that there are expenses for a building. I'm not stupid. There's water, there's sewer, there's other things. But their gross profit to start at is $118,000 a month. That is $1.4 million a year in income for that building, 59 units. At planning, they agreed to give a one-time impact fee of $535 per unit, which is about 25% of one month's rent for those units. That's all they are paying the City of Somersworth, and that is to help paint Fayette Street with new parking lines. That's the proposal. Now, at planning, what I also learned is that the water line they are touring into is 100 years old, and it's recognized that we're going to have to replace that soon. They're not going to help replace that. We're going to pay the cost as the city to replace that water line. What I also learned is that Fayette Street has some parking issues. We talked about that. They've triple and quadruple counted the parking. Nobody's addressing the parking that's going to happen with that building, but again, that's not neither here nor there. If we value the new building at $5 million, which I think is conservative, since you guys are valuing my law office at $500,000, has one apartment in it, I'm assuming $5 million is a low-ball number for a 59-unit apartment building, the taxes would be $92,000 a year that we would gain from that building. The proposal is that they pay the current taxes of 100, actually $10,000 a year for seven years, not the $92,000 they are supposed to pay. So essentially, the $92,000 in taxes that they should pay is less than one month's rent for this building if the units are rented. And we're proposing to give them a seven-year tax break. Mind you, we've already given them a giant seven-year tax break for the other building, essentially on the same lot. So the tax break, if we simply do the math, is $81,883 a year for their tax break. That's what we're giving them, $81,000. So the total for that is $573,181. That's the tax break if we just value that building at $5 million. It may be valued at more, in which case the tax break is even bigger. Why does that matter to me? It matters to me because we're going to pay the carrying cost to upgrade the sewer line that we know is 100 years old. We're going to pay the carrying cost to upgrade Fayette Street, which is in dire need of some work, at bare minimum, some little paving spots, some parking. We're going to bear that cost. By "we," I mean me, the taxpayer. You're giving them a tax break. There's no income tax in New Hampshire. The people who are moving into this building are not going to be paying anything to our community. And the argument I've heard is two things. One, oh, it's going to support our businesses. I've got news for you. Did anybody do Feast Around Somersworth? I did. I walked around and I said to the businesses, "How's it going with customers?" You know what they said to me? They said, "My God, I need workers." You have two businesses in this city who are looking at closing because they cannot find workers. If you look at the Help Wanted signs all the way down High Street, they cannot find workers. Why can they not find workers? Because they cannot afford housing. The number-one people reason that college students are not staying in New Hampshire, and I don't know if you've read the research, we are a draining elderly state. The number-one reason given is not affordable housing. The number-two reason is not affordable childcare. So this apartment building is not giving any of that to us. It's not giving anything back to our community. It is taking from our community. Now, I'm not against development. If you want to let this apartment building be built for the sake of housing, mind you, I gave all of you wage stuff because we pulled more research. I gave you the shipyard wages, which show that the shipyard folks are not making, at starting $56,000, which is the minimum rent to afford a $1,700 apartment, not $2,000. I gave you city employee wages, because you should know those, but I'm giving it to you anyway, to show that your city employees cannot afford these apartments. My position is, if we're going to give them a tax break, then the people who live here and who work here should be able to afford to rent these apartments. The common proposal is 10%. That would mean six units at market affordability rates, so that someone working at Burger King could pay $1,000 in rent instead of $2,000 and live here and work here. Again.
Unfortunately, your five minutes is up. I'll give you 30 seconds to.
Thank you. I am.
There's a motion. Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
I will continue.
Vincent? We have a motion and a second. Counselor Gibson, do you second that?
Yeah.
I think you were making the same motion. All right. Quick vote by council. If we suspend council rules to allow Ms. Schoen, what was your proposal? I'm sorry?
Continue.
Continue till she's finished. Thank you. So motion for council is to allow Ms. Schoen, to suspend council rules to allow Ms. Schoen to continue till she's finished, seconded by Counselor Gibson. We're going to do a quick roll call vote that works for folks. So, City Clerk.
Counselor Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
No.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
No.
Pepin.
Yes.
All right. You may continue.
Thank you. I will be fairly brief. The bottom line is, I don't think that it is appropriate to give these folks another tax break. I don't think it is appropriate to give them any tax break without asking for something that is a bigger concession for our city, in the form of either repairing Fayette Street and that water line, which is going to cost us quite a bit of money, and they're using it, in the form of, you have to give us some affordable housing, in the form of something other than the $30,000 one-time contribution that they are making. Again, I'm going to stand before you every single time, whether I'm elected to Ward 1 or not, and oppose tax exemptions for developers that are not giving something back to this community, and I don't see that here. I am fine with housing. We absolutely need it. I'm not fine with my tax dollars supporting corporations who are giving nothing back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Others wishing to make public comment this evening? Yes. If you could state your name and the ward in which you live, please.
Hello, City Council. My name's Bonnie McNair. I'm in Ward 1. I'm also, incidentally, the Chamber Director of our esteemed Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to make a quick announcement about some of the things we have going on. We've got our golf tournament happening on the 23rd, and we have our gala coming up on November 5th. In previous years, city council participation in the gala, for a number of different conflicting reasons, has been minimal, and I would like to see the city show up for our chamber this year. So you'll all be getting your own special invitations, but I would love to see you or some of you at our gala on November 5th. And then also, we have some ribbon cuttings we're welcoming. Kia in on the 23rd, the same day as our golf tournament. And then also, Deck the Falls. We're highlighting all of the businesses in our, what I'm calling, border town area, so Somersworth, the Berwicks, and Rollinsburg. We're doing another passport event where participating businesses can be highlighted and all sorts of fun things, but I really want to get the bi-local movement working here and connect our downtowns in a way that makes a lot of sense for the growth that we're trying to encourage and what we're currently experiencing. So I would encourage everybody to, if you talk to business owners, let them know what we're doing. We want to help them thrive and grow and stay here in Somersworth. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to make public comment this evening? Yes, come on up. State your name and the ward in which you live.
Fran Budowski, Ward 2. I'm running for the open seat on the selectmen from Ward 2, and I just wanted to put a base to the name that you're going to be voting on later tonight. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to make public comment this evening? Yes, again, if you could state your name and ward in which you live.
Good evening. Dennis Messier, Ward 3, I believe, Cemetery Road 39. I'm here in support of 28 Green Street. I think it enhances a dilapidated building. The issue of the water line, if the water line's in the city street, that's our cost, that's the city's cost anyways. If there's impact fees for the bedroom, that's fine. That's the way it should be. That's the way it is. So that's enough on that. The Warming Center, I agree, we should need to continue that until hopefully the county can get that project going. And then the Omri Project, that's an ongoing, so if we can get that finalized tonight, that would be another plus. Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment this evening? Anybody else? All right. We will move on to Agenda Item 6, which is the approval of the consent calendar. The Chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the city council meeting held on September 22, 2025. Do I have a motion? Counselor Cameron? Counselor Cameron moves the consent calendar be adopted, seconded by Counselor Goodwin. Question for the council is on the adoption of the consent calendar. If you are in favor of the motion, you'll say by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll say by saying nay. All in favor? All opposed? All opposed? All right. As we have it, consent calendar is adopted. Brings us to Item 7, which is comments by city councilors. Are there any comments this evening by councilors? Yes. Counselor Witham.
I might as well get fully into character for this. Tip this down.
I've been waiting for this.
Because for the moment, I am not Dave Witham, I am Charles Dorr. Charles Dorr lived here in Somersworth in the 1800s. He died in 1899 as a result of pneumonia at the age of 54. You see, back in 1800s, there were no medicines for pneumonia as we have today. Mr. Dorr lived up on Lincoln Street, and at the time of his passing, was a great shock to the community. His home was filled with the finest flowers the city has ever seen, and his body was brought from Lincoln Street to the Forest Glade Cemetery where it was buried. Mr. Dorr was well-known in the community. He owned a small dry goods store downtown, but he was most noted for being the cashier of the Somersworth National Bank. And cashier, you say, it's not a very prominent position, but in the 1800s, you were in charge of all the finances for the institution. And that bank, the Somersworth National Bank, sat right here where City Hall is today. You can go to the Historical Society Museum down here on Main Street and see a picture of the bank, and alongside the picture is actually a bronze plaque that was affixed to the door that I went through every day on my way into work at the bank. So he was later appointed as Bank Examiner for the State of New Hampshire by then-President of the United States Benjamin Harrison. You all remember Ben, I'm sure. And it was a very prominent position and quite something for a Somersworth boy at the time. So, out of character now. And I'm just using this as an opportunity to highlight what I thought was a fabulous event put on by our Historical Society here in Somersworth. They did a Grave Tales event. Basically, people showed up to Forest Glade Cemetery, and were taken in groups of 10 or 15 on a walking tour of the cemetery. And obviously, people that are buried there for that day came back to life and told their story, and I was one of about 15 or 20 sites that people wandered through. It's a fundraiser for them. It was very well attended. I'm going to guess somewhere around 200 people. It was just a fabulous event, and I just want to share that because our Historical Society does so many wonderful things. The museum downtown here is but part of what they do, this tour, which they can't do every year because there's a lot of work that goes into it, but probably every other year, but it really is fabulous, and I'm glad to lend a hand in any small way that I can. So, thanks for that.
Thank you. Other comments by councilors? Counselor Barry?
I will just say, they sold 167 tickets that day, and I was told that that has been their most successful fundraiser for the Grave Tales to date. So, thank you for bringing that up. And I'll just jump on the bandwagon that also they are having a paranormal activity at the museum on October 18th. Tickets are available if you go to their site. I don't know if they're sold out yet, but I think there's going to be a lot, just from that being an old City Hall building. So I encourage everybody to join. I was just going to add that.
I have heard it's haunted, so that's the rumor. Other comments by councilors? All right. Thank you. Move on to Item 8, which is communications. We have none. Item 9 is presentations of petitions and disposal thereof by reference or otherwise. We have none. Brings us to Item 9, or excuse me, Item 10, which is the mayor's report. This evening, I am very proud to announce the deliverance of two memorandums of understanding before this council this evening, both related to winter warming operations, and I hope for the continued support by the council on both of these MOUs. Our first MOU, if accepted tonight, and then certainly later by the communities of Dover and Rochester, would enter our three cities into another agreement to operate the Will and Warming Center for what will hopefully be its final year. This agreement mirrors the agreement from last winter and would entrust the county to hire East Coast Evolution Leadership, which was the agency we utilized last winter to run the Will and Warming Center. For operations, Somersworth would not be contributing any direct financial support, but like in years past, we would be contributing in-kind municipal services, such as police, fire, and ambulance, like we have done before. Dover and Rochester each would be contributing $75,000 each to the operations, which is worth noting. The expectations of the service providers will be the same as last year, and as I think you all remember, we were quite pleased with the work that they did, and I foresee same quality as then, as what we saw last year. And certainly, I also want to clarify that there is one slight change, which is that we have extended operations for this contract to April 15th, because we felt like we were continuing to encounter late, or excuse me, early April winter weather that was unfavorable, and we're often opening it to that point anyway, so we've extended it then. East Coast is also going to be allowed to begin preparations in the building as of November 1st, with the expectation that they open no later than November 15th. The second memorandum of understanding is an agreement between the three cities of Dover, Rochester, and Somersworth, as well as Stratford County, regarding the construction of a new countywide seasonal warming center, something that I have been tirelessly working towards during my tenure as mayor, and I know was worked on even before my time, and I believe will serve as a model for winter warming throughout the state. For years, we have all known that Will and Warming Center, though critically important in servicing the needs of the unhoused citizens during winter months, has not always been a permanent solution to the crisis. Will and Warming Center was certainly not built to be a warming center. Its layout is not necessarily ideal, and operators have certainly faced challenges using the building for this specific purpose. But beyond that, it sits within a growing economic corridor of our community. It is quite far from city bus routes and away from service providers. So the new building, which is planned to be located at the Stratford County complex, will be specifically designed with input from service providers, so hopefully the layout will be more accommodating. It will also be along a bus route. There is a bus route that goes out to the county, which will hopefully allow for easier transportation to and from. And it will also be located near critical services that provide mental health assistance, transitional housing assistance, and substance use assistance. No other communities in the state, as far as I understand, are as far along in this process as we are in providing services to our unhoused citizens, and the potential really exists for even stronger partnerships moving forward. It would certainly be the expectations of the tri-cities, based on this MOU, to then fund the construction of this new building, based on each city's portion of equalized assessed value, which I believe, as of right now, Somersworth is slated to cover about 14, I think, percent of the costs, depending on what that is, obviously. But Stratford County is then expected after to provide the land at no cost, and upon completion of the construction will be responsible for operations of the facility. This is certainly a huge, huge step forward. I don't want to let that go unnoticed, and I truly hope that the support of this council this evening allows us to kind of make this a long-term plan and actually turn it into a reality from what has been, I think, five, maybe even 10 years now, just conversation. Once approved by the three cities, the counties would then engage in an RFP process that would solicit bids for construction, and after which, we as leaders in these communities would then see this final bid and approve funding. So we're not approving any amount tonight, but we are kind of committing ourselves that we want to continue in this process to move forward and actually are going, are interested in soliciting bids to see what we could get for building, for this building. I know I see Commissioner McGlory's here as well, so if, when we get to that point in this evening, you have specific questions for him or the county, I'm sure he would be happy to have rules suspended, and we could invite him up to talk more, but I've been a part of this process from the beginning and happy to answer questions when we get there as well, specific to Somersworth. But as always, I'll certainly make sure to continue updating you, as I have been doing, and really want to thank you for your continued support up to this point and hope that I have your support with these two memorandums of understanding this evening. But that concludes my report. Thank you. Next up, we have Item 11, which is reports of standing committees. First up is the Finance Committee Chairman Witham.
No report, but we are looking to tee up a meeting, I think, for this Thursday, late in the afternoon.
Perfect. Thank you. Next is Government Operations Committee Chair Michu.
Thank you, Your Honor. Government Ops met on October 1st here at City Hall. First thing on the agenda was to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2025. Second was a petition regarding the communication and timing of posting agendas. That was a petition that Mr. Brooks brought forward about a year ago. After a lengthy discussion, and fortunately, Mr. Brooks was able to attend, and we questioned him, and he likes the progress of the city's going. We're getting the agenda out early enough, but he would like to see more, a little more improvement. But overall, he likes the way the city's moving forward with the way we're posting things, social media is being used. So the recommendation from Government Ops is no action from City Council. Next on the agenda was discussion of council rules. And I'm going to keep very brief on this. I think the city manager will have more information on this when he does his report. But basically, what we're going to do is, the agenda we're using right now, we're trying to rearrange it to make it a little more easier to go through and less repetitiveness. So there's something, it was in our city manager's report. So if you happen to see it, this is what we've been talking about this evening, and Government Operations is considering, we want to move forward with this and at least do a trial period for the next three months, or not three months, for the next couple months, for the next three meetings that's left for City Council, at least try it out. And if it works, great, we'll do it next year. If not, we resume back to this one. And next one is that decorum in public meetings. That's one that brought forward about conduct on the city council, school board, committees, and all that. We really don't have one in the City of Somersworth. The city manager was good enough to go forward, look up at other areas in this community, in this area like Dover, Rochester, and all that, and brought forward what would be good for the City of Somersworth. There's nothing really we can enforce, but something that guidelines for us as we move forward. This is not out of committee yet. We're working on it and expect that to come out soon. And next, we adjourn.
Thank you. All right. Economic Development Committee Chair Goodwin?
No report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Chair Pepin?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Public Works and the Environment Committee Chair Witham?
Yes, thank you. Public Works and Environment Committee met back last week on Thursday, October 2nd, or a couple weeks ago. Counselor Michu sat in for Counselor Barry, who was not able to attend your appointment, Your Honor. We had a discussion of our 2026 paving plan. Again, as we've shared here before, typically, council begins to vet out what streets we would consider for road resurfacing in the fall of the prior year, so that we can bid the projects over the winter and commence work in the early spring. We continue on that timeline. So city staff, particularly city engineer Amber Hall and our Public Works Director Mike Bobinski, brought forward a number of paving plan alternatives for us to consider moving into 2026. We reviewed all of those and focused our attention to what was defined as Group A. The streets in Group A are Hanson Street, Morning Street, Myrtle Street, Pearl Street, and Nash Parkway. And if you're familiar with the city, those are, it's all a neighborhood. It's interconnected. The city has a grading scale of all of our roads. It's called the Pavement Condition Index, and some of these streets rate very, very low. That index goes from zero, basically being a dirt road, to 100, being a brand-new road. And some of the streets in this area have, for example, Pearl Street, a portion of it is an 11, and another portion of it is a 31. So we're tackling streets that have a very low score, that haven't been done for decades. The value of tackling an entire network of streets like this is that you're mobilizing equipment but one time, which allows us stronger pricing and allowing us to spend more money on the actual paving product. So that is the series of streets that we're looking to pave in 2026. That comes in at a price tag estimated of about $815,000. We have $900,000 in the current fiscal year budget to address this, and we have about just shy of $200,000 remaining from this past year's paving projects. So with that, we also discussed the paving of Rocky Hill Road. That's come up at a number of different meetings. That requires what we'll call total reconstruction, so you've got to rebuild the road bed before you can just pave it. And unfortunately, the road bed is not in good shape, and there were no drainage swales. In fact, the sides of the roads for a good section of Rocky Hill Road are actually higher than the road bed itself, and that would present drainage problems. So all of that would need to be reshaped and reconstructed, so that pushes the price up. So that pushes the price tag, you know, north of, well north of $350,000, $400,000 to do that work. So the committee said, geez, we have a couple hundred thousand, maybe, if pricing comes in good on our paving, that we might be able to tackle at least the beginning stages of work on Rocky Hill. Deal with the road bed, deal with the drainage, you know, properly configure it, so that maybe in the following year, we could pave it. So kind of taking it in steps, if you will. And it's all going to depend on pricing. City engineer is going to come back at a future committee meeting with what the pricing for that initial road bed work would be for us to consider as part of this package. We also talked about maybe doing some limited crack sealing, particularly on some major corridors. We could use some touch-up on High Street and things of that nature with any remaining funds. So sort of a work in progress, but that's where we're at with teeing that up for council action later this year. The other thing that we looked at is our sidewalk paving plan for 2026. We don't budget as aggressively there, but the section of sidewalk that we're looking to tackle is on Maple Street, from West High Street to approximately Bartlett Avenue. That section is heavily used by walkers. It's heavily used to access cemeteries in the city. It's a prime candidate for just replacing the hut top, as the granite curbing is in very good shape out there, so we don't have to rebuild the whole sidewalk. We look to be able to hopefully do that for $115,000 or so. We did ask a city engineer to maybe develop a scope of work to fill in a gap section that exists between Maplewood School and Bartlett Avenue. For whatever reason, there is no sidewalk in that 400 or 500-foot section, so maybe as part of this to grab that and finally have total interconnectivity. So more to come on that, but that's what we're focusing on right now. We had a discussion about the traffic island at the end of Cemetery Road at West High Street. As we know, in the community, the "keep right" sign gets run over all the time, whether by accident or on purpose. We think it's a healthy mix of both. We are going to leave it in its current state with the sign not there for the time being, because in order to rectify this problem, probably requires relocating that traffic island slightly east to create a wider opening. There's plenty of road to do that there. The reason the island exists is for what's known as a pedestrian refuge. It is one of our wider intersections. I think it's 80 feet wide, is what the city engineer said, so that, in engineering terms, suggests the need for this pedestrian refuge island in the middle. But for now, we're going to leave it status quo and revisit maybe a relocation of that in the spring. City manager went over a couple of DOT public hearings that are coming up on the 10-year highway plan. Our Route 108 Complete Streets project and the redesign and re-signalization of the High Blackwater-Indigo Hill Road intersection projects keep getting pushed off further and further. We discussed why that is. Funding is a big part of it. City manager encourages us to perhaps speak at those public hearings. I think he and city staff may well speak at those, just trying to encourage support for projects that impact our community. And I'll leave the report at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have Recreation Committee Chair Cameron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm looking to schedule a meeting probably next week.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is item 12, which is reports of special committees. Are there any reports of special committees this evening? Counselor Pepin, then Parity Katanzaro.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We had an 9-1 meeting on September 26th at 11:00 a.m. at the Somersworth Police Department Conference Room. The first thing on the agenda was approving the minutes of July 2nd. That was done. First thing that we looked at was 396 High Street. It's on the corner of Stackpole and High Street, which used to be the Ready Care Building and had insurance offices up top. It's been converted into apartments. We went through the, we were trying to number the apartments and then how to get to them and whatever. It seems to be very, very complicated, because there's not just one door that you can access all the apartments. There's multiple different doors that you have to get to. We kind of like tabled it at the point, because we wanted to do a site review over it and basically be able to look at it and try to figure out the best way to address the signage for defining which apartment is which and which door to go to. So that got tabled. Second thing that was brought up was the apartment on High Street here, on the corner of Constitutional Way and High Street. I reported on that building before. There's four apartments that access on High Street. For some reason, it wasn't brought up that there's two apartments that are on the backside of the building and has no access off of High Street to get to. So we're trying to get a numbering system or try to find a way that emergency services don't pull up to the front of the building and say, where is 82 High Street? And it's not labeled there and there's no access to it. So the access is that the parking lot that the city used to own, which we sold several years ago to a private, to a developer there. We're thinking about trying to make that a passageway. It used to be a road that used to go all the way down to Elm Street before it was renewed. So it was a discussion of naming it Marshdon Court, which was the original name of the road that went down through there. They're still working with the owners to make sure that is feasible. Right now, there's two apartments on there right now that may be a little bit confusing for emergency services, so we'd like to try to address it as soon as possible. So you may hopefully have that in the near future. And I don't have the time that we adjourn, because I don't have the minutes.
Thank you. Counselor Parity Katanzaro, and then Counselor Witham.
Yeah, just a brief update. The Community Outreach and Communications Committee met at 6:00 p.m. this evening, just before our meeting here tonight. We reviewed, we did a final review of a draft of a flyer for new residents containing some city information, some school information. We discussed some miscellaneous communications items, including getting more voting information this season up on our Channel 22 and things of that nature. A few specifics that I will be bringing forward to the staff, and we adjourned at 6:33 p.m.
Thank you. Counselor Witham.
Yes, thank you. The Mayor Special Committee to look at our high school athletic facilities and infrastructure met on September 25th. We actually met offsite over in the city of Dover. We met at Dover High School in the library there. The goal being to understand from our friends in Dover, their journey to get to where they are now. If you're not familiar, Dover is out to bid currently, City of Dover is out to bid currently for a rather aggressive athletic facilities upgrade at their high school. It's an estimated $18 million project. It's far greater than what we're looking to do here, for sure, but the journey is not that different, right? They identified that they had inadequate facilities, field issues, lack of fields, all the same things that we're talking about here. And we wanted to understand how they got to where they're at. And interestingly enough, the journey didn't start much different than ours, with some folks gathering around a table saying, geez, we lack in this area, we could use this, and it finally progressed to where they are now. So it also included a tour of their current facilities. It was raining, I think the only day it's rained this year, the night we were there. But interestingly enough, the library has huge windows that look out over the athletic field, so we were able to sort of do a window tour of all their athletic facilities and just help to guide us in our future decision-making process about what we might want to do here. So it was info gathering. We had a number of committee members present. City manager came along to get up to speed as to what we were doing. The Dover High Principal is there, several members of the building committee were there. Really just a good meeting, I thought, had by all with some back-and-forth discussion. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other reports of special committees? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to the city manager to deliver his manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be relatively brief this evening. The mayor's afforded me the opportunity to set up some of the more complex action items that are on your agenda this evening, so I'll speak in more detail to those later in the meeting. But I do want to draw your attention to the city manager report, and particularly the information items that we have placed there just to highlight a few goings-ons and items we're working to bring forward. The first is, there was quite a bit of work and discussion done by both staff and the committee members for the standing committee reports, and so I draw your attention to the memos in support of those discussions. If you haven't looked at them already, they are quite well-done by our DPW staff in helping to craft options for the discussions. Also, you'll see a number of notes in there from Director Michelle Mears related to grants that we are pursuing on a variety of initiatives, which, you know, are laudable and aligned with the master plan goals and strategies. So I'd call your attention to those. The two projects that the mayor referenced related to the upcoming governor's commission meetings for the 10-year plan related to the Route 108 Complete Streets project and the Indigo Hill-Blackwater High Street intersection have caused some good discussions on staff, mindful of the financial challenges at the state level. We do see these projects as being very important for the vision for your success that you have articulated in a variety of places, and so we want to advocate for them, realizing, well, we might not be successful this go-around. We can build the awareness amongst our representatives, our executive council, our state senator, our legislative delegation about where these things fit into moving Somersworth forward. So while we might not be successful this year, we'll be exercising the muscles of educating about why these things matter to Somersworth. One, being a substantial safety improvement in the High Street corridor. And the Complete Streets project has renewed significance for this community in the staff's view. That is, it's not just a nice-to-have project with transportation elements, multimodal, and beautification and sidewalks. We're linking three communities, three significant commercial corridors of three communities. It has a regional significance. The new state courthouse is going to be constructed in the Rochester portion, and there's a very important new twist related to the legislator's efforts, legislature's efforts to introduce new housing in New Hampshire communities. And that is to compel housing uses in all districts, including economic districts. Picture a 108 corridor that evolves organically the way it is now with no, with no vision, no investment towards the experience of the residents working there, recreating there, moving about. The Complete Streets is not a, it is not a nicety when you consider the introduction of multifamily housing on a corridor like that. So we aim to raise the profile of that project, the importance, and hopefully move it forward, because the threat there is, while there's still design monies and engineering monies funded in the 10-year plan, we have seen the construction monies move out of the 10-year horizon into the abyss, right? So it's something to advocate for. Also, wanted to draw your attention to the, yet another state revolving loan fund that our team has secured for the water treatment plant. You may recall, we recently authorized the funding through our enterprise funds for the design and construction of our water treatment plant upgrade, which is about a $7 million project. We've recently received word that we are going to receive a substantial, a state revolving loan fund with substantial loan forgiveness, which is noted in your memo as well, and I intend to be bringing you back a borrowing resolution at your next meeting on October 20th. I wanted to add just one more piece to the discussion from the Public Works and Environment Committee meeting. It was a very thoughtful discussion, lots of understanding and acknowledgement of the frustrations for people who have advocated for the paving of Rocky Hill Road. So I've made a commitment to that group to reach out to the gentleman who has spoken here previously, and at least one other gentleman who's advocated for the project, and make them aware of the discussion the Public Works and Environment Committee had, the concepts we're trying to advance, the staff are moving forward incrementally, and also getting them, having, assuring them that the, you know, the decisions associated with prioritizing paving have gone through a process, and, you know, there are difficult choices, but still, I think there's been some constructive solutions that we can use to show actual progress that will go a long way. So I'll be reaching out to those residents. Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, brings us to item 13, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments the following are being introduced this evening. We have Fran Baldowski for appointment as a Ward 2 Selectman with the term to expire in November 2025, following ratification of the 2025 municipal election results. Jason Berry for reappointment as a member of the planning board for a term of three years, and Jeff Wit, excuse me, I apologize if I say this incorrectly, Witess, oh, I should have practiced, I apologize, Jeff Witensky, I believe, for appointment as an alternate member of the planning board for a term of three years. Nominees will remain in nomination.
Your Honor. Yes. I'd like to suspend council rules to act on the appointment labeled A.
Yep.
Fran Baldowski, as a selectman, there are some training requirements to get her on board.
I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a motion to appoint Fran Baldowski to Ward 2 Selectman, seconded by Counselor Vincent. Discussion. Yes, Counsel Witham.
Just finished the thought that I had, that, you know, there is a training requirement here, and it allows just a little bit more time to get that done before the election in November.
Appreciate that, thank you. Other discussion? Seeing no more discussion. If you are in favor of the nominee, you'll stay by saying aye. If you're not, you'll stay by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, ayes appear to have it, ayes have it, nominee is accepted. Thank you. We also have another nominee up for confirmation vote this evening. We have Anthony Jones for appointment as a member of the zoning board of adjustments for a term of three years. What are the wishes of the council? Counsel Witham.
Yes, I move that the council approve the nominee.
Second. Thank you. Counselor Witham makes a motion to appoint Anthony Jones as a member of the zoning board of adjustments for a term of three years, seconded by Counselor Goodwin. Again, motion for the council is the appointment of Anthony Jones. Discussion. Seeing none. If you're in favor of the nominee, you'll stay by saying aye. If you're not, you'll stay by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, ayes appear to have it, ayes have it, nominee is accepted. Thank you. All right, brings us to item 14, which is items laid on the table. We have none. Brings us to item 15, which is unfinished business. Tonight, we have ordinance 25-25, as it's been amended. It's been read a first and second time and had two public hearings and is now open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment, I will seek a motion on ordinance 25-25 as amended.
I make a motion to adopt.
Counselor Goodwin moves to adopt ordinance 25-25 as amended, seconded by Counselor Gibson. A motion for the council is on the adoption of ordinance 25-25 as amended. Discussion. Yes, Counsel Berry.
I just wanted to say thank you to city staff for looking into whether or not we still had to have it all listed out and doing their due diligence and all that, and I was happy to see with the outcome.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay, seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of ordinance 25-25 as amended, you'll stay by saying yes. If you're not, you'll stay by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Katanzaro.
Yes.
Mishu.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
All right, ordinance 25-25 has been adopted. Thank you. Brings us to item 16, which is new business. We have a handful of items under other this evening, so we'll go through them one at a Under item other A, we have a vote for the 2025 operation of Will and Warming Center at Will and Drive in Somersworth and Stratford County, countywide seasonal warming shelter proposal for the '26-'27 winter. Again, I'm looking for a vote on the approval of the two memorandums of understanding, remember there are two. The first being, again, to authorize the city manager to enter into agreement for the winter warming operations this upcoming winter season. And the second would authorize the city manager to enter into agreement to advance a new countywide seasonal warming center on county land in Dover. What are the wishes of the council? Counsel Parity Cottanzero.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into two agreements with Stratford County and the tri-cities as presented to facilitate the 2025-2026 season of operation at the Will and Warming Center, and to move forward with a countywide warming shelter on county land with the final financial participation to return to the city council for approval, as suggested in the city manager report.
Thank you. Looking for a second? Yes, seconded by Counsel Berry. So again, Counsel Parity Cottanzero moves to authorize the city manager to enter into two agreements with Stratford County and the tri-cities as presented to facilitate both 2026-2025, excuse me, 2025-2026 operations of the Will and Warming Center, and to move forward with a countywide warming center on county land with the final participation to return to council for approval at that time once funding is secured. Discussion. Yes, Counsel Wither.
Thank you. Fully support this moving forward here tonight. You know, I'm not sure how many times we've said about this time of year that this is the last time that we'll do this.
I swear.
So I won't say that, but I think each and every time we've said that, what's interesting is that there was an end goal in mind. Unfortunately, the end goal wasn't realized, but this one, quite frankly, seems to be among the more achievable that we've had yet. It seems realistic. It seems more in our control than some of the others were. I know Chairman McGlarus, at one point in time, used the analogy of the three-legged stool. Not sure the stool has ever been built, but the approach was the right one. And this moves that closer to what we're trying to achieve. It's not exactly what he described then, but it's pretty close, right? And I think is worth our continued vigilance. We're not going to build it now, and not between now and this winter, so we got to do something, so I'll leave it there. I support this.
Thank you. Discussion, Counsel Vincent and Parity Cottanzero.
Thank you, Your Honor. The second part of this, I don't know if I have it clear. Can we have a little bit of explanation? Does this mean that we're looking for somewhere in Stratford County to build a new building?
We have identified the site.
Okay.
Former Humane Society area in the county land.
Right.
And so that site, again, the county has been generous to offer the land for use for this.
Sure.
And we have a building design put together.
Right.
This would allow us to go out to RFP for builders and developers to potentially build that on that site.
And does that means that we're going to have a contribution, the city's going to have a contribution to that?
Yes, at some point.
At some point.
We have final say over approval of that.
But this is just a planning stage right now.
Planning stage. This is to essentially get us to the RFP phase, where we could then see what bidders come back.
And then forecasting or looking into the future, we're going to try to grab other communities within this?
So it would be the three cities have agreed to fund this.
Right.
If we continue to move forward. And then the hope is that down the line, the county would then take over responsibility of operations, which then would have county contribution, which would be from all the towns in operations.
I can go with that, thank you.
You're welcome. Other comments? I think it was Parity Cottanzero you were next, and then Berry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is a huge, huge undertaking. Just want to recognize all the time, mayor girding that you put into it. I also think it's really important for us to get this in writing, as we have municipal elections coming up, and neither of the other two cities that are in this agreement have an incumbent mayor running for reelection. So we're going to have two new people at the table, and it's just really good to get into writing what the collective vision has been, so that it just helps keep this process moving. So thank you for all of that, Matt.
Thank you. I've got Counsel Berry, then Gibson, and then we'll do Peppin, and Wither, my did to your hand, but I'm going to let folks who haven't spoken go first. Go ahead, Counsel Berry.
I just wanted to say I'm very much in favor of this, because again, I know in past, we've always said, or previous councils have always said, you know, this is the last year. But again, that doesn't make the need for this go away, just because we want to put blinders on. And I'm very happy that it seems like there is finally steps moving forward to have this finalized, because again, we're not the only community with this problem. It's across the nation, and we can't just put blinders on. It causes more problems if we do. And again, we need to take care of our community members, even if they're on hard times. I think we are judged by how we treat those who are down, and we can't just put blinders on. So I'm very happy for this, and I'm very much in support.
Thank you. Counsel Gibson?
Yeah, I'm basically in support of going ahead with this process. My only concern is, and I believe that we have final say on that, but based on what's been happening in the area, I'm really concerned that the build capacity for this building is not going to meet the demand going forward. I know that there's been an expanded network providing support to the homeless population, but as Michon just demonstrated, there's very hard pressure on the average working person to be able to afford housing in this area. And from what I've seen over the last couple of years, there are people that you would have never suspected to be homeless, because from one reason or another, they lose access to the housing that they had. And I don't believe how many of them are living in hotels in the area, which means that they're probably paying even more than they would for an apartment. But they don't have access to housing. So as long as we have some final say on what is that going to actually look like, because I don't think 100 beds is realistic. I think that we're looking at very hard times going forward for a lot of people, because it seems like most of our developers' concept of affordable housing is not realistic for the average person. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Peppin, and then Wither, unless, yeah, Counsel Cameron, I'll add you in there too. Go ahead, Counsel Peppin.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Every time this gets brought up, I keep saying I'm not going to vote for it, but I will be voting for it this time. I had a conversation with the mayor and says, well, this will be the last time I'll be voting for it, because I won't be here next year, so that'll be it. But I told him I will be out on the stands and saying, when they come back up and asking us to open it again next year, I'll be telling, I told you so, simply because I don't think the funding's going to be there or whatever. Mr. McGoughlin, for all the stuff that you've done, Commissioner, I can't say enough for you. I appreciate it very, very deeply. I know you tried to get Riverside upgraded and all the stuff that you went through to try to do that. I deeply appreciate it on my part anyways. My parents, my mother was in Riverside, so I know what the situation is in there, and it does need to be upgraded. My reasoning behind this is that, as we used to get the reports of where people came from and were using the warming shelter, it was more than this Somersworth, Dover, and Rochester. They came from Vermont, they came from Maine, there was people from all over the place. My biggest gripe out of the whole thing is that I don't think it was just, should have been Somersworth, Dover, and Rochester. I think it should have been a big, broader person that ended up paying for it and stuff like that. We've had people that are not even local areas that have their police department drop them off at the front door in the middle of the night, and that's what was upsetting. Once they left the warming center during the morning, they're in our businesses, trying to keep warm inside of our businesses, the local businesses, and sometimes it wasn't always a good outcome there. So I believe that we need some type of facilities for these people. I don't want to see anybody freeze, and never did. My main objective is basically the funding and whatever, and I just thought that facility was way too small for what we were doing it. I'd like to compliment the group that ran it last year. I understand that they're running it again this year. Totally different outcome last year than it was in the previous years, and my hat's off to that group that will be running it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cameron?
Thank you. I'm certainly in favor of this, and Mr. McGlaughlin, you have worked tirelessly trying to get us where we are. I am disappointed that Riverside hasn't gone through, because my daughter-in-law works there, so I am very familiar with what is going on there. But this is certainly a positive start. I'm not sure we could build a facility big enough to help everybody right now, honestly, but I hope you have everybody behind you, supporting this, and that it moves forward with flying colors. So thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you. Other counselors? Counsel Michu?
Commissioner McGlarus, I can't thank you enough for what you've been doing. You've been doing this, trying to get this going, for many years. I'm in my eighth year sitting here, and I know you started way before then, before I even got on city council, then Mayor Hilliard appointed me to the newly-formed Mayor's Task Force of the Three Regions. So I know it's a long process, kept getting kicked down by the state level, but you keep going forward, and I can't appreciate it enough for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors?
Yeah, I'll have to say one thing.
Yeah, without objection from the council? Yeah, come on up. Thank you.
First of all, my name's George McGlaughlin, and I don't live in Somersworth.
I just want to take a moment to thank you all very much for hosting the Warming Center here in Somersworth. As most folks know, the city of Dover actually owns the building. There's a couple of things that I think it's important for the folks to understand. And I heard, you know, the comments by Counsel Peppin regarding, we have some folks that came from Vermont, and we had one from Florida. But the vast majority of those people, matter of fact, 98% of them were Stratford County residents, or tied to Stratford County in some form or manner. I agree with Counsel Gibson. He is absolutely correct in terms of, we've got about somewhere between 250 and 300 chronically homeless in our county. The numbers that we saw, the numbers, the population numbers that we saw in Willland in the last few years, and prior to that, at the Arms House where we operated the Warming Center, there were a bunch of nights where we jumped up like to 115 or 120. But last year, we averaged about 72, give or take. Your mayor has been doing a fabulous job, of course, Mayor Hilliard as well. I enjoyed working with him on this issue. To get to Representative, I mean, Counsel Gibson's point, I'm hopeful that at some point in the future, that we will be able to construct a new nursing home. When we construct a new nursing home, the plan was always to take the old nursing home and use it for transitional housing, for workforce, and for the Warming Center. So the concept here is that, the concept hasn't really gone away. You mentioned the three-legged stool, it's kind of like a, I don't know what it is at this point. The housing that we talked about back then was we wanted to have 750 units. We're well into the thousands of units in Stratford County. A lot of things have changed. But we needed the new nursing home in order to get the third leg, which was to do the transitional housing and to deal with some of the homeless population. So I'm hopeful that in the future, that someday, we're going to have to build a nursing home in this county. We're not going to have any choice. We just, the numbers are just so tremendous. The numbers of elderly we have that we're dealing with, which is mentioned earlier, we have a state that's growing old. And if you look at the numbers from the State Office of Planning, it's not a pretty picture. We just can't build ourselves out of that problem. And the hospitals right now are screaming at me practically on a daily basis, wanting me to take more people from the hospitals. It's just not a great situation. But with that said, I think we're going to try to move in a positive direction. I'm trying to convince the county delegation, and the reason, one other quick point, that I didn't have the county delegation vote just to construct the Warming Center, so that the cost would be borne by all communities in Stratford County is because I couldn't get the votes. The votes aren't there. We're two votes short of the construction of a nursing home. I need two-thirds vote of the delegation. We're two votes short. We were two votes short three years ago. We're still two votes short, and I'm not stupid. I recognize that there's no way I was ever going to get the county delegation to vote to build a Warming Center on county property. So the mayors got together with me and the city managers, and we said, well, how else? Is there any other way we can do this? And I said, yes, the three cities could pay for the building. The county would donate the land. And then I will, you'll have my word that I'll include it in next year's budget for the county to fund it, so that allows some contribution from the towns. They've already started screaming at me, saying they don't want to contribute anything. But people don't understand that we had about 20% of that population was from the towns. They came from the towns. The reason why they come to the tri-city area, Dover specifically, Rochester, and Somersworth on the 108 corridor, is that that's where all the services are that they need. Goodwin Healthcare's there, the two hospitals are there, they come there to get the services. So it's pretty easy for them to walk in and say, well, I'm from Dover, or I'm from Rochester. We're going to get a better handle on this as we move forward. I mean, we have a handle on it, but what are you going to do with them? They're a transient population. Up until 35 years ago, the county was in charge of transient populations. The legislature took us out of that business and turned it over to you folks. Now, I can assure you one thing, that if this project doesn't go forward in its present form, this will be the last year Somersworth is in this business, because there is no other answer. You're going to be on your own. Every municipality will go back to being on their own. That is something that I've assured the mayor, that, and Dover has actually said, we're going to sell the building. Important thing is that building, once it is sold, the proceeds of that building, it's going to come to the county so that we can offset the cost of a new building. And this building, when you look at that plan, is a very austere building. This is just a simple structure with some bunks in it. It meets ADA requirements for showers and bathrooms. It's going to have a laundry service, it's going to have room for social services. Those things that we've recognized and learned over the past eight or 10 years are those things that we need. It's not a Taj Mahal, it's not some, you know, gilded lily here we're building here. We're just building a straightforward building to take care of those people during the coldest weather seasons. And with that said, Your Honor and members of the council, I appreciate again your support. City of Dover's plan is to sell the building. That's their plan. If they have to go back this on their own, everybody has to fall back into their own little silos, and every municipality takes care of their own. City of Dover plans on selling the building. That's their plan. And they're going to take care of their own. And you're going to take care of your own. Everyone's going to take care of their own, and we're still going to have homeless walking the streets, because they're a tough population to deal with. So with that said, I just wanted to make one other point of personal privilege of a man, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the people of Somersworth the past 42 years for their kindness and support during my bids for county commissioner. As most of you are aware, the county was broke up into commissioner districts, I no longer represent the people of Somersworth. But I have a tremendous respect for the people of Somersworth, and they've shown me great kindness for the last, actually, 43 years, until I was no longer able to run here. I have a lot of family in Somersworth. My grandparents are buried here, and I just want to take an opportunity for those listening at home to thank them for their kindness and support over those 43 years. So thank you, Your Honor.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So if you are in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Parity Cottanzero?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Wither?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. City Manager, you are now authorized to proceed with the two MOUs. Thank you. All right, and again, thank you, council. This is a lot of work going towards this for many years, and so this is a huge step. So thank you. All right, brings us to item B under other, which is a vote on the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program application, which is under City Ordinance Chapter 31, for 28 Green Street, Somersworth, LL. Brings us to item B under other, which is a vote on the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program application, which is under City Ordinance, Chapter 31, for 28 Green Street, Summersworth LLC, for the redevelopment project at 28 Green Street. I'll defer to the city manager to introduce this project from his mayor's report as referenced earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're at the stage with this application for the 79E tax relief, where the city council has an action before it. As you recall, the process established in your 79E ordinance is for first to be handled and reviewed by the Economic Development Committee. They have reported out a recommendation on this application to be accepted and for the city council to move forward with it. They also want to point you to a very constructive discussion that happened at that committee level, which was related to assessing need in granting these applications. And essentially, what was raised was, how do we know that these projects would not move forward but for this 79E assistance? And it's a very good question. And the current ordinance does not request any details associated with project funding that would help with an analysis by an appropriate credentialed person to review. So I took the opportunity, and the developers readily took me up on it, which I very much appreciated. We had a very good discussion in person about the Economic Development Commission's observations and a way forward. I shared with them research from staff on what other 79E applications look like in other communities. They provide, they collect more financial information, frankly. They collect pro formas and additional detail. And to the credit of the developers, they decided to voluntarily submit that information in order to help move this, move the application forward. And I appreciated that. In the course of doing that, they also revised their request for assistance from seven years to five years. So the actual request in front of you this evening is for the five years of the tax relief. In your ordinance, there are specific process requirements for your decision-making. You've gone through your public hearing. You've gone through your Economic Development Commission. You're required to make a declaration and two findings. And I have a sample motion for you, depending on what you decide to do this evening, which makes reference to what I propose, I read into the record now, so you only have to hear it once. The first is to declare the redevelopment project at 28 Green Street into 59 market-rate residential units to be a public benefit to enhance Summersworth Downtown Revitalization District with respect to economic activity, cultural and historic character, sense of community, and in-town residential uses that contribute to economic and social vitality. Also, the Summersworth City Council would be voting to find that the project meets public benefits A, C, and D in Section 7 of your ordinance. And specifically, A, enhances the economic vitality of the downtown. C, it promotes development of compact and vibrant municipal centers, providing for efficiency, safety, and greater sense of community, consistent with RSA 9B. And D, it increases non-subsidized residential housing in the Downtown Revitalization District. And this district I'm referring to was adopted at the time of the adoption of the ordinance. Finally, the Summersworth City Council would be finding that the public benefits of A and C, that I just addressed above, would be achieved to the same degree if the current non-contributing building was rehabilitated. Those would be findings that you would, you would make in order to be consistent with your ordinance in making your decision. So, Mr. Mayor, the recommendation is to, the motion is to move forward, to adopt the five-year period, and to authorize me to move into a covenant with the public benefits as described in this, the memo that I've read to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So, again, as was stated by the city manager, applicants requesting relief for five years, we'd have to make the declarations. What are the wishes of the council? Counsel, Goodwin?
I'd like to make a motion to, I don't have the hard copy of the manager's report here, and my phone is not opening it here, so thank you. Give me a second here to find the motion. All right. So I believe there was a two-step process here. So to adopt the required findings and declarations as presented in the manager's report, and to grant tax reliefs as described in Chapter 31 for a five-year period, and to authorize the city manager to enter a covenant to protect the public benefit as described in Section 8 of the ordinance.
Seconded by Counselor Mishu. So again, motion for the council is to adopt the required findings and declarations that were presented, and to grant tax relief as described by our Chapter 31 in our ordinance for a period of five years, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a covenant to protect the public benefit as per Section 8 of the ordinance. Discussion, Counselor Gibson?
Okay. First off, I'd like to thank Mishon for putting together the information package you did concerning this. I am not going to vote for this. I feel that on any number of levels, I dislike this. They've, as stated, they've already received a substantive easement as far as the tax rate goes on the main building that they're building. Their proposed rentals that they're listing are something that the average person in this town cannot afford. The average employee of this city cannot afford. And we're going to reward them for, at best, bringing in people from outside who are pushing up out of other areas. The Foster's ran an article recently that to afford a studio apartment in the tri-city area, you need a minimum income for one person of $56,000. To afford a two- or a three-bedroom, that goes up substantially. You're talking these rates, as shown in the fact sheets that were submitted to us, that the average person cannot afford these apartments. Besides the fact, I like how they say historic significance. They're tearing down a building that has historic significance to the city, regardless of what they say about the shape it's in. We've already seen that done once before. We're taking on the burden of providing additional infrastructure support for their well-being. And as stated, I'm really fascinated by how they came up with their numbers for parking and why we should once again be, allow them to make use of public parking areas that are putting an additional burden on the surrounding areas as far as parking goes. Because we're going to let them have Fayette Street to park on. They want to build something. Put your parking on your own land like everybody else has to. So I just don't like this. I will not support it. I know I'm on the losing side in all probability, because all anybody sees is, oh, boy, we got more housing coming in. Housing for who and what cost to the city itself? I really don't like people reaching into my pocket to make money. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent, you are recognized.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let's talk business here. Let's talk about the constituents that all us nine counselors have to deal with. When you give away this money, which you are, we need money in this city. We need revenue. But let's go back a little bit. I'm a guy who's had multiple rental properties. I own business to this day. I've done these deals. But I've never done the deal where I had a tax relief. I've always paid my fair share because I lived in this city. So you'd think the best person probably to give a deal to would be the person who lived in the city his whole life. Maybe. Did I ever get it? No. Now we got people coming from the outside. So let's take that into consideration for one second. Let's think about this. Maybe two years ago, when we did this old Summersworth Police Department, we gave away that little tax deal because nobody wanted the building, and it was in the best interest of the city at the time? Because that's what it was. It wasn't because we wanted to give some builder a great deal because he was going to come in and fix up a dilapidated building. That wasn't it. We couldn't get rid of the building, so we gave a little tax incentive. Maybe three years ago, four years ago, we would have done this, but now it's a different story. Why? Because we have people who are overbidding for properties, who will pay what they want to save. If that went back on the market, somebody's going to come up, a builder, and take it over and build. It's not like it was five years ago, people here. It's not like it was five years ago, and like, oh, you know what? Nothing's selling. What are we going to do? Oh, we need to fix this up. You need to stick to where we need to be for the revenue and for the best interest of not us nine people here. It's about the people that we represent. If you want to give their money away, it seems like that's what we're going to do. What, to better what? That is going to develop, no matter what. If the guy backs out on it, somebody else is going to be there to take care of it and do it, because that's business. You know why? Because there's money involved here. Please, think about what we're doing here. You're giving away, not a little bit of money, a lot. So if I can't convince any of you to do it, then at least take the five years and bring it to two years. At least that'll save some of our constituents who we represent in this wonderful city. We need money, people. We just bought a $2 million fire truck. We have roads that we need to pave. We have things that need to be maintained, and we keep asking the people of this city to dish in their pocket a little bit more while we're giving money away to someone that doesn't even belong here. Let me rephrase that. To someone who's an outsider, who's going to come in and make money. That's what it's all about here. So please, take your righteousness and think about the people that you are representing Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion. Counselor Barry?
I talked to quite a few constituents on this project. Most of them understood that the application was for seven years, and they had a very similar conversation with me about, I get they asked for seven, let's bring it down a year, maybe two years. I think that has happened, in my opinion. I take personal offense to saying we don't want outsiders in our community. I am an outsider. I was not born here. I chose to move to Summersworth. I know there's a lot of people who chose to move to Summersworth for reasons, it's affordable at that time, it still is affordable for some, not all. There are things here that brought me here, our historic district, I loved. I'm an outsider. I want us to quit saying outsiders if you live here. They chose to come here. We're providing opportunities for more people to come here. I understand we need housing. I understand we need affordable housing. But I also understand that this property that we're talking about has been vacant, except for storage, since I've lived here. That's another problem I have. So we had the opportunity to get more money to our city. Yes, it might be further down the road, but I also know that property has not been developed, is what I look at as well, and we could sit here where it's currently at for another 20 years. We have an opportunity to make money in five, is how I'm looking at this, and also talking to other residents that want this bill. So I just wanted it to be clear that I have talked to residents. I'm saying this with those discussions, as an outsider who chose to come here, that I am in support of this. But also, I don't like that I'm hearing that even if you move here, you don't contribute. I go to local restaurants here. I shop here. I fill my gas tank here. I don't think we can say, just because they rent an apartment, they don't add to our community. So I take a lot of offense to some of the comments I'm hearing tonight, and I hope it's thought about, because not everybody was born here who lives here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? For the mayor next.
Thank you. RSA 79E, so state RSA. State law was changed to allow local communities, if they so chose, to adopt this provision and enact it. At the local level, it's Chapter 34 of our ordinances.
31.
31, sorry. If you are. Any counselor that doesn't like this idea of granting tax relief could introduce legislation at any point in time to repeal our ability to do this. Right now, we have the ability to do this, and developers, big and small, know this when they contemplate a project in our community. That's part of their plan. It's part of their financing. It's part of their way to achieve the end goal. We could argue whether they could do it without it or not. Some of the pro forma information that the city manager was able to obtain would suggest that this certainly does help, because it's an expensive building to build. So, yes, they're going to be bringing in X number of millions a year, but it's going to cost them X number of millions to build the building, to run the building. So I get all of that. If you look at the genesis of RSA 79E, it is for taking properties that would otherwise be undeveloped, lending themselves to urban blight, that contribute little to nothing to your urban core. And, oh my God, this old dairy screams that, right? If you were to Google urban blight, I'd be surprised if that building didn't show up as the picture. That is it. That building contributes nothing to our community vitality or the sense of a downtown. It does none of that. An apartment building surely does, right? It's going to put people in the downtown. People will be arguably utilizing some of our businesses. Are there staffing shortages? Sure there are, right? But I see the net gain here being super positive. Now, that being said, and again, I think these, the folks that are proposing this have generally worked fairly well with the city. The last planning board meeting where this project at 28 Green Street was approved as the, Your Honor, I give them respect when I'm talking.
Counselors, please remain in order. Thank you.
Thank you. At the planning board level, I sit as the council planning board rep. I did talk about things such as resurfacing Fayette Street. We've talked about Elm Street. We talked about Green Street. We talked about the water line. And the water line's an interesting one, because that's not funded by taxpayers. That's funded by ratepayers, and those are two different things. And they are a substantial ratepayer. The amount of money that they're paying to hook up to our water line and sewer line is substantial, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So they are making a contribution if we so choose, as a city council, to take that money that they're providing and upgrade the water line. It's in our street. We can do that, right? Because that water line not only benefits them, it benefits every other house on Green Street and probably many of the neighborhoods beyond, as it's probably a major feeder line, right? So everything about this says that this makes sense. I do like the move to five years versus seven. And don't ask me why, because much of this evaluation process is a bit nebulous, right? I would love for us to have a rubric, that if you do this, you get this, right? We don't really have that, right? It's a little bit of how you feel about something. And the seven felt a little heavy-handed to me, being frank. I think the five is sort of a sweet spot for me. And I do think Counselor Barry is on point here, that this is not a short-term decision. This is a long-term decision. If we were talking just about a decision for the next five years, that makes no sense. But if you're talking about the next 20 years, the next 30 years, there's significant revenue coming in. there's significant revenue coming in in terms of tax dollars to this community to help support our various needs that have been outlined here. But you've got to look beyond the front of your car. You've got to look down the road here a bit. I'll yield for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, other discussion from counselors. I'm going to go to people I have not heard from yet. So we'll do Council Peppin, Council Mishu.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm probably going to show my age here. As I remember before urban renewal, I remember when mill houses all the way along Main Street, where people were in mill houses. Houses up on Washington Street. Some of them weren't in very good condition, but they were filled with people. Urban renewal took all the people out of our communities. My wife's house sat where the Nappa store is right now. Two guys come in the house, handed my father-in-law a check and says, this is for the land. You can do whatever you want with the house. You have to be out in 30 days. So that's how that scenario went. I've lived through the town that the mills were completely full of people going to work. Shoe shops were completely filled. 2,000 people working in GE. We had cars back then, so there was parking problems. I don't see where this project's going to put that many cars that we've lost from the mills or whatever. I'm sure we can find a place for them. I've seen all kinds of different types of little markets and stores that used to be on the corners, donut shops and all kinds of things. That there was one just about an every corner. There was also a beer joint on every corner too. But that's besides the point. But we had people in the town. I had, my wife's uncle came into town a long time ago and basically wanted to come downtown Summersworth to find some place to socialize with. He says, they roll up the streets at 7 o'clock PM. There is no outside functions that draw any people into our downtown area. There is, downtown is dead. We've got to find a way to bring people into our communities. And hopefully, that will bring different activities into our community to have a city. I've seen Dover grow. I've seen Rochester grow. I've seen, in the communities, I've seen Portsmouth go completely out of there. Summersworth, and I have to say this, there's some people that don't want to see any growth at all. You have to do something to stimulate growth. If it takes five years to stimulate the growth, I think that's something that I think we ought to give up, to stimulate it. It's just that I can't see how you can ask a developer to come in here and spend as much money as it costs to build today, a building, and not have a plan of putting people in it. I look at the charts here and look at the wages. And yes, you're probably right. The people in Summersworth are not going to be able to afford those houses. And that's absolutely right. Are we possibly bringing in people from the outside that can help our community? Bring in more investments? Bring in more businesses or whatever by bringing them in? I'll be an optimist. Maybe if we have too many apartments, maybe the price of apartments will go down in our community. So it does reduce the cost of apartments. So if you don't want to look ahead and you don't want Summersworth to go forward, vote against it. Myself, I'm a Summersworth boy from long back. And I'd like to see the community come back with people in the downtown area. And I think this is one of the ways to help do that. So I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Mishu, you are recognized.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to let the counselors know that everybody that reached out to me about this project, only one told me not to give it to them. Everybody else that talked to me about it, they weren't comfortable with the seven years. But they were more happy with like a three to five year. And in which they came forward and offered a five year instead of a seven, shows me that they're at least in good favor trying to make some of the people happy. So I'm going to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Goodwin, you have not been recognized yet. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a lot to unpack, so work with me as I organize my thoughts here. I want to step back to 2012. I was graduating UNH. Focused in urban geography, was planning to go to grad school in city planning. And I was fortunate enough to get a grant through the state that would pay me as an intern to work in a nonprofit or government agency. And the city of Summersworth was kind enough to host me in the city planning office that summer. So I had a paid internship in the city of Summersworth as my first, like, professional job experience in city planning slash development. The planner at the time, awesome guy, gave me a list of things to do. He's like, these are things in the master plan that I haven't gotten to yet. And pick two or three and your job is just get them done. And 79E was one of those things. At the time, it was a recently adopted state ordinance that enabled communities to provide tax relief within a district, which enabled them, gave them an economic development tool to focus investment into areas that had not seen investment. And there are criteria, there is actually criteria, right? So there's like, you know, you can get extra tax relief if you're doing historic renovation or replacement structure versus new structure. There are, you know, there's some nuance to the relief you can get. But we structured, I structured during my internship, the current ordinance we have. And essentially, you know, lobbied it through council at the time. Summersworth is a different place than it was in 2013. But let's not forget what the purpose of this is. And it is to bring investment to our community. And as Counselor Peppin said, investment has not come to the center of Summersworth, downtown Summersworth, in my lifetime. The last major project that happened before 79E was the pad site being built on the plaza. And woo, you know, game-changing. Literally nothing, nothing. And there were vacant buildings, vacant, there still are vacant buildings. There were more vacant buildings, there were more vacant storefronts. And I am proud to say that after 79E was adopted, there have been a number of very successful, albeit smaller, projects that have used this tool to bring investment in the heart of our community where it has not happened for a literal generation. And I get that growth is hard. Change is hard. Big business, scary. You have every right to be critical of folks looking to get relief. This is an opportunity cost to our taxpayers. There's no money out of pocket for us. It's an opportunity cost. It's money we would get in revenue that we are foregoing to incentivize investment and in development in our town. This is a long, a longer horizon strategy. If this is 15 apartments, let's assume 1.3 people per apartment. Could be higher, number of couples. I doubt there's any families. That's just not the demographics we have anymore. So there's probably no school-aged children in a building of that size. So you're talking about 76 new people living in the downtown. Those 76 people are going to walk. They're going to go to, they're going to go to Bill of Pizza. They're going to go to Hot and Fast. They're going to go to Shreve Market. There could be new businesses that pop up in the downtown to serve these residences, to fill the vacant storefronts. Those are the spillover effects that we want in the downtown. This is completely neutral of housing. Like, there is a housing crisis, you could put that on the back burner. It doesn't almost matter. We had, you know, 2,000-ish people that used to work in the GE building. They're gone. And the difference between what downtown looked like when that building was fully occupied, when there were 2,000 people in the downtown versus not, is night and day. And GE is not coming back. That building may be reused at some point, but it's not going to be a 2,000-person employment center. I almost guarantee it. Where are we getting these people from? Where are we going to house people in a housing crisis? There, you know, you can argue about affordability. And I think it's an important conversation. But the reality is, to build housing, it is a market rate product. Like, there's just no if, ands, or buts about it. If you want a car, your options aren't only, if you want an affordable car, you're not buying a new car. You're buying a used car. The same thing is true with apartments and housing. New product is expensive because it's new. It is not for everybody. And if you, and this is actually a great example, like Cash for Clunkers or like during COVID when there was a chip shortage, used cars went up in price because new cars got harder to find. And that is also true with housing. If you do not build enough market rate housing, the existing used housing becomes more expensive. And that actually has more negative effects to the residents of Summersworth. Because then they can't afford the house they already own, that they already occupy. Because we didn't build enough new housing for the people that can afford to pay more than them to house the people that are better off. So now there are spillover effects. And we, as Summersworth council representatives, have no power to manage this at a regional level. Portsmouth, I have thoughts, right? Like, they dropped the ball, they missed it, right? Like, they did not do enough for affordable housing. And there are spillover effects for the region, including Dover and Summersworth. And it is just, everyone's passing the buck. I think we've gotten better. But the process has started, right? And there's nothing we can do to reverse a regional trend. But we can do what we can for our community. And I think being pro-housing is critical. If we want affordable housing in our community, we need to work with people that build affordable housing. It is a different business model. It is mission-driven. It is for-profit. It uses tax credits. It is worthy, but it is complicated. And we need to be targeted. We can't just yell at private property owners who are doing things within right about the affordability issues with their product. Like, we don't go to Target and tell them that their pricing's too high. Like, they built their store and they're operating their business. I'm going to step back for a sec. So now let's talk about why this matters. And I think it is important to understand where this sits bottom line. And I do think we have an opportunity to refine our process here in Summersworth to make sure that we are doing the diligence for our taxpayers. The original application of the city did not require a need assessment. We were just going on vibes. Like, oh yeah, Summersworth is down on its luck. Rents are low, construction costs are high. We'll give you relief. Okay, well, the regional economics have changed. We are starting to see more interest investment, which is what we wanted. But we want to make sure that we're not being over generous. Reasonable. So let's ask for need. So we asked the developers in this case for a pro forma, which is a financial model that shows, you know, costs and expenses and income and their debt service and taxes and all the expenses, all the income, and comes up with a return. Because this is a business and it needs to make money. And that pro forma should demonstrate where this tax benefit hits. And Mrs. Shone came up and provided, you know, some numbers on projected revenue. And she's not wrong. Like, this building will generate hundreds of thousands of dollars a month. And it will have hundreds of thousand dollars of expenses a month. And, you know, just for fodder, I brought up, you know, pulled up my little Redfin app here. There's a house we're sold down on, what number is this? So a house for sale on Myrtle Street, 8 Myrtle Street. It's $390,000. And Redfin provides a nice little breakdown of what your expected monthly payment would be. And this single-family home is structured pretty similarly to how a large commercial real estate project is structured. You have a down payment. You have equity that you, the developer, the owner, puts in. And you have a mortgage or a construction loan, which is the majority of the money. It's like, you know, just like your house. You put, what, 5% down, 10% down, maybe 20% down. And the rest is mortgage. Developers do similar. It's commercial, the ratios are slightly different. But same idea. So their meaningful, a huge part of their monthly expenses are just paying the debt on the property so they could build it. So just using this single-family home as an example, if you want a, it's a three-bedroom, one-bath, it's 27, the projected monthly mortgage payment, if you do 5% down on this home, is $2,700 a month. And so 1,900 of that is principal and interest. 500 of that is taxes, homeowner's insurance, and mortgage insurance, right? So what we're talking about is the $500 in taxes here, in this particular example. And when you scale this up, that's tens of thousands of dollars in taxes that are part of their operating expenses, that are projected. And when I go to a bank or when you go to a bank as a homeowner and you're saying, they want to be able to know, can you pay your mortgage? Right? The lender wants to know, wants to be able to see that you have the income and capacity to pay, make your mortgage payment. And the same is true when this developer or any business goes to the bank to get a loan. They want to see that you can pay, make the payment. And if you can't make the numbers work, something's got to give. Construction costs are kind of what they are. Rents are kind of what they are. I mean, they can try and push them, but...
Point of order, Your Honor, point of order.
Yes.
Can we stay focused on what we're talking about here? We're a little off the track.
I don't think he is.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm getting at is a need assessment.
Please be in order.
So what I'm getting at is the need assessment. So what a lender will do is they will take the cash flow of deferred tax dollars. So let's say it's, I don't know, $40,000 a year in deferred taxes for five years. And they'll come up with a net present value. And they assign that to your loan, right? So it's like, they're showing it as equity. And so it's critical to help close financing gaps. Like, this isn't voodoo math. This is like genuine, relatively simple math that lenders will go through. And I, you know, based on my experience, and I have had projects in Summersworth, I've tried to underwrite other projects in Summersworth in my day job. I understand the need. I think it's fair. But I guess I will conclude by saying that, you know, if we want to be, if we want investment in our community, we need to contend with what that means. And what that means in most cases is growth. And if we are anti-growth, then we might be anti-investment. And I think we should reflect on what that, what the implications of that would be for our goals as a community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Other counselors I have not yet heard from. Counsel Cameron. And again, before Counsel Cameron starts, I want to remind counsel that you may not like what others are saying, but you will be respectful in this council chambers. Understood? Counsel Cameron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not a native of Summersworth either myself, but I chose to live here. And I have talked to some community members around as well. And a lot of them are very pleased with the project that's going on over there. Because it is going to bring new people into downtown. It is going to start jump, the revitalization down here. And I am more inclined to go with a five-year E79 on this project. Because the long-term goal in the end is we will get revenue in the years to come. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Perry, Counsel, you have not gone. I would recognize you if you would like.
Sure. I am in support of this. I won't repeat a lot of what has been said already. But it is a long-term win, in my view. And that reflects what the constituents I've talked to have shared as well. I moved into the community in, I think, 2017, 2018. As a renter, it was affordable. I'm lucky enough now that my wife and I were able to buy a house here. So we contribute that much more with our taxes above and beyond everything else that we have enjoyed in this wonderful community. So I look forward to welcoming these new folks in. And I'm in support of the five years. I think it's a really good compromise.
Thank you. All right, back to seconds. So Counsel Gibson, you are recognized.
Okay. First off, I'm not a native of Summersworth. I moved here 40 years ago. So I'm an outsider. So I resent having my opinions disparaged. I speak for people that I represent. And they're the people who just got hammered with the reassessment on mobile homes. They're the bulk of the people in... They're the bulk of the people in my district. And you talk to them, and they're looking at not being able to afford to pay their bills, but they have to pay their tax bills. And taking my fellow counselor's own little example, the person building the house doesn't get the city to buy off part of his mortgage for him. Small businesses, which I was for a number of years, I owned 15 units in town. Nobody offered, when I was remodeling them from virtual wrecks into livable units, to foot the bill for me. So that's where I'm coming from, besides the fact that, as I also stated, there are factors involved here outside of the actual construction costs that I don't agree with. And saying that the plumbing comes through the enterprise fund, guess what? I pay for the enterprise fund. You pay for the enterprise fund. So that money is coming from us just as much as anything else in this city. So...
Thank you. Counselor Vincent, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I just want to make one point of clarification. When I said people from the outside are coming in, I didn't mean the people that were gonna be renting. I'm talking about the absentee landlords, the people who have already created a little bit of a mess in this city. That's who I'm talking about. I would never look on, I mean, you'd think that people would know me. I would never look on anybody who wanted to come in and live in this city. I welcome that, and I do welcome affordable housing that has yet to be seen. One more thing. I want to see people walk down on Market Street and buy apples again, but unfortunately, they're calling Amazon. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilors for seconds? Counselor Witham.
Thank you. Again, support this, just let me come right out and say that. I do like the five years, it just seems a bit more palatable than the seven in what is a bit of a nebulous evaluation. I will say, Counselor Goodwin, I'm gonna miss you sitting beside me. I am educated every time you talk. Frankly, I wish you had talked longer tonight, because I feel more informed and even better about my decision, because it's very clear what you're trying to convey, and you do it well. This is state law that was passed to allow us to do this, and we took up the state in allowing us to do this. Very, almost never do I ever say, hey, thank you, State of New Hampshire, for something you did for Somersworth, because they never do anything good for us. But this is maybe one of those things that allowed us to kind of have this flexibility to revitalize our urban core. And these projects do that. If we didn't revitalize our urban core, our net gain in taxes would remain stagnant. It doesn't change. If 28 Green Street is not redeveloped, we're gonna collect what we're collecting in taxes for the foreseeable future. It is not going to change. This is going to change in what, five years? To a rather large number. So the net gain here, over the long term, and even if the long term is 10 years, and that's not long, is substantial. Never mind all of the other spillover effects of people perhaps dining at The Villa or Hot and Fast, or buying beverages at Chiva Market, or, I think those are the three that you used, trying to remain consistent here. Those are net positive things. I don't know how you could do them as negative. I understand the view of my councilors that don't like this, that somehow the burden is being borne by the rest of the taxpayers. I just don't see it that way. I can't make the connection. So, again, and thank the developers for having Somersworth in your sights as a place where this makes sense to do, and hopefully we're not scaring you away.
Thank you. Other seconds? All right, seeing none. If you are in favor of supporting the motion, you will state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
No.
Gibson?
No.
Harriet Cottenzero?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The tax relief is granted. Councils stand in recess for five minutes. We are back from our brief recess. Thank you, everyone. We are up now still under item 16 on our agenda, new business. Under other, we are at item C. This is a vote to authorize the use of Voting Works electronic ballot counting devices for elections held within the city of Somersworth per New Hampshire RSA 656:40. Again, this is a RSA proposed by the state. It is a compliance measure. I don't know if there's much more background that needs to be given, unless City Manager, you'd like to chime in. You're welcome to.
No further background from me.
All right, thank you. All right, what are the wishes of the council? Counselor Gibson?
I move that we accept RSA 656.4.
All right. Counselor Gibson moves to approve the Voting Works electronic ballots per the RSA, seconded by Counsel Barry. Motion for the council is to approve the use of the Voting Works electronic ballots per the RSA. Discussion. Yes, Counsel Barry.
I just think it's something we voted on that we would move to, so it would make no sense not to put this forward, in my personal opinion, but there we are.
Other discussion? All right, seeing none. If you're in favor of supporting the motion, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Gibson?
Yes.
Harriet Cottenzero?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
All right. Ballot counting devices are approved. Thank you. Brings us to item D under other, which is a vote on the confirmation of sale contract terms for 15 Blackwater Road, which is the former National Guard readiness center, to Kenneth Scarpetti and Douglas Anderson. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council knows, the city is under an agreement, purchase and sale agreement from December 2023 to sell the 15 Blackwater Road property to Mr. Scarpetti and Mr. Anderson. This project of the sale of the Armory, I realize, has been going on for some time. And in my initial tenure here, I've worked to come up to speed. I want to thank people's patience for that, as I've come up to speed on the transaction. One of the tools for doing that is to look at the contract and make sure that what you are agreeing to as a council is actually being carried out in the form of deeds and closing documents, that sort of thing. That's the responsibility of a city manager. So in doing that, I'm recommending, I have two issues that I'm bringing up to your attention tonight in order to facilitate this transaction. One of them is I need additional guidance from the city council, really clarifying and making explicit authorization to sell a certain portion of city land. I believe that is an appropriate decision based on the evolution of this transaction. So that is what you have here as a sample motion. It's to authorize City Manager to include the sale of a portion of Tax Map 22 Lot 50, which includes a portion of a right-of-way known as Parkview Terrace Crestview Drive to Blackwater LLC, and is shown as part of Lot 22-10 in a three-lot subdivision 15 Blackwater Road dated 2024. That is the first issue that I'm recommending the clarification on from the city council. The second is really at the request of the developer. The developer has requested I return to the council to seek clarification on the intended uses of the property following the sale. You have, so, two issues. The background for the first issue is, over the course of the subdivision and lot line approval process, and working with the planning board, feedback from city staff resulted in the inclusion of city land to facilitate access to the 15 Blackwater site, which, as you know, is going to be developed for 35 condominiums. That was discussed, frankly, at length, and the subdivision plan was approved in a manner that included land that the city council had not yet authorized to sell. No problem there. When you get to closing or preparing to close the transaction, you just get clarification that the intent of the inclusion of the land is the intent of the city council, and you've authorized me to sell it. So the cure for the evolution of this transaction is this sample motion, which I've just read to you. The other issue is, there's no sample motion for. That issue being what the intended end use of the property is to be. The reason there's no motion is because I'm currently authorized, and I've been acting in this manner since pursuing the closing. That is your June 2025 resolution, which was to sell the property for residential uses. That's very clear to me. So what I have done in the course of preparing closing documents and discussing this with the buyers is say, the city council has an expressed intent, it's written in the resolution, and it's for residential purposes. That is what I need to do, and if we're not gonna do that, I've got to go back to the council and get guidance. Also, what's important for this portion is to explain that the three-lot subdivision that was approved by the planning board includes, of course, the Ballfield property that we are proposed to retain, that we are going to retain, that has Little League Field. There's two other parcels that were developed as part of the three-lot subdivision. One, the property that is going to result in the 35 residential units on the majority of the site. This other lot that was developed, that was created by the subdivision, was the maintenance garage facility that you see nearest the corner of Blackwater Road and that corner with that roadway we were just discussing. It's been my position, and I've been consistent in this since I've begun, gotten to know the project, is that the council chose to sell the land for residential purposes, and the reuse of the land should be for residential purposes. That includes both lots. I have not been able to gain agreement on that, and I accept that that interpretation may not be in keeping with your wishes. I'm here tonight to ask for guidance if your wishes are otherwise than what I've referenced already. I would note, Mr. Mayor, that the buyers are here this evening, and I'm happy to serve as a resource for the council, any questions you might have in the course of considering any action, including the sample motion.
Thank you very much. All right, with all that in mind, what are the wishes?
But I am here representing the buyer, to put some perspective.
Yeah, let's let council, thank you for offering up your time. Let's let council propose a motion. If the council wishes to suspend rules to invite you up, we can do that. Thank you. So again, looking for a motion from the council. Yes, Counsel Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Instead of a motion, can we just discuss this amongst ourselves, or is that out of line?
Typically, we need a motion for discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we discuss this, if we could.
I sure did. Oh, boy. All right, seconded.
Your Honor, I'd like to move, I'll make a motion. I just gotta find it, point it up right down here. Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a motion on the floor.
This is true. He does have a motion on the floor. Would you be amenable to the written language that is in our documents for motion? Do you want to stick with your motion about discussion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, thank you. Counsel Witham, you are recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to move that the Somersworth City Council authorized the city manager to include the sale of a portion of Tax Map 22 Lot 50, which includes a portion of the right-of-way known as Parkview Terrace Crest Drive to Blackwater LLC, as shown as part of Lot 22-10 in the three-lot subdivision 15 Blackwater Road, planned dated December 2024.
Thank you. And a second, looking for a second? Counsel Gibson. All right, so again, the motion as stated by Counsel Witham is to authorize the city manager to include the sale of a portion of Tax Map 22 Lot 50, which includes a portion of the right-of-way known as Parkview Terrace Crest Drive to Blackwater LLC, and is shown as a part of Lot 22-10 in a two-lot subdivision 15 Blackwater Road, planned dated December 2024. All right, now we can do discussion. I'm gonna quickly refer to the city manager, who did signal me, then I'll come over to Gibson and Vincent.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. I forgot to provide some guidance in signing off on my initial setup, which is, we are in a contract with a buyer, a purchase and sales agreement. I understand a member of the public may seek to be recognized. I expect that that's counsel. I know that that's counsel for the buyers. I would just want to mention to the council that the intention for tonight is to get guidance from you on my interpretation of your previous action. There are a few steps left to go in this, including the process in RSA to discontinue the road. This is all to say that this is a, when you talk about changing an agreement, you're in a negotiation. And it would be, in my view, constructive, and frankly, in the best interest of the city, to advise me in order that I may represent you in finishing this negotiation. And I have nothing else to add.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson, you are recognized.
I don't know if it would be appropriate first to ask the gentleman to speak, because my first question is going to be, if not residential, what are they talking about?
Yeah, without objection from the council, we'll invite the representative? Okay, yes, if you'd like to come up.
Point of order.
Yes, sure.
Can we put a five-minute time limit on this presentation?
I think that's within rules. Five minutes. I can, hopefully. You're more than welcome to pass them out. Yes, thank you.
I'm on the clock, so I'll be quick. So this is an agreement that's coming up on its second year anniversary.
First, state your name, I apologize.
My name is John Bisson. I am, in fact, counsel for the buyers, Mr. Scarpetti and Mr. Anderson. And we have had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Moore and your counsel. So this agreement is coming up on two years old in December, and I guess I am concerned about the concept of negotiating that we just heard, because we have an agreement, and I don't think we're too far from where we thought we'd be, but there are some points that are, I guess, confused or perhaps ambiguous or whatever. And as I explained to your attorney, Specter Morgan, he and I agree that ambiguity is not a good thing when we're talking about a contract. So if you go to the last... So, if you go to the last page of the handout that you just got from Mr. Scarpetti, I think that's the best one that shows the overview. So, what is happening here is, obviously, the sale of the lower sort of half of that project, where you can see the condos, and it's 30, not 35, that are being constructed there, that have all obtained planning board, zoning board, all your municipal approvals. The ballfield at the top is what you're keeping, the Little League field. There is the corner lot called map 22 lot 10-1, which is currently a sort of a maintenance facility building, and the other existing building that's shown on a prior plan is getting destroyed, and it's being improved by these condos. So, the, the issues that we're here to address really are, what is this agreement? What, what was it that we believe we purchased? And the agreement is less than clear. It's a form agreement by the Realtors Association, so it wasn't really heavily negotiated at the time, and it has one section that really deals with the specifics of this transaction, and it says simply, "Buyers request the right of last refusal of the Little League field that will be subdivided off of the property should the city ever decide to list the property for sale, and then closing to take place on or before 30 days after all state, local, and appeals have been satisfied." So, we got those approvals, and then we're trying to close and memorialize this agreement, and much of what we've heard is not in the agreement. It came up as we went through the planning board and the other municipal approvals. So, the issue is, what's shown here is Wellington Place is, in fact, a Class 6 road. As part of this process, originally, the clients, my clients weren't going to buy it. They didn't want it, and going through the process, the town said, "Take it." So, now, this new condition of discontinuing the road, that's burdening the process on the road that they didn't want to take in the first place, but they're happy to take it, and they will provide an easement to, to the back, so that you can get to the ballpark. There's also a little corner piece right at the corner of Wellington and Blackwater that was actually owned by PS&amp;H or Eversource, and as part of the process, my clients had to go through and get that little piece conveyed to the town, so that now you have clear access. So, none of those, my point is that none of those conditions are in the original agreement, but we did them, and we did them voluntarily to move this project along. Should I pause, or, I don't know?
We have one more minute of your time, which we will, yep, I, Counsel Gibson is technically still recognized, and then it will be you, but we did agree that five minutes would be allowed.
Okay, so, I better, I better move along. So, some conditions that I haven't heard were, you're retaining the Little League ballfield, and that was, that has been a point of concern. My folks went through the process, planning board, with the understanding that the town would keep it as it is, as that use, a Little League ballfield. No lights, keep it Little League. If it becomes a major league field, or whatever, we're going to be hitting balls right into our condo. So, that was a condition of the project, keeping it Little League. This building in the corner, which is this use of residential, throughout the process and with the permission of the prior city manager, it has been used to store personal vehicles of the gentleman who will own this project. And when they went through this project, that's what they understood, that they would be allowed to store their personal vehicles in there, just boats, whatever. It is, in fact, now approved as residential, which means after this goes, they can make it a house, they can do whatever they want. No one is really debating that issue. It's simply that, as they went through this process, restricting that as a Little League field permanently and using that for boat storage, and those two things, personal storage of the owners, those became the points of contention, none of which are mentioned in the purchase and sale agreement. So, we're here because of that ambiguity. I agree that Mr. Moore needs guidance so that we can get this done. We should have been done by now, and we'd like to be closed.
Thank you. All right, Counsel Gibson, you are still recognized. If you had a question, welcome to.
Okay, um, so, my first question would be, did you want to be allowed to keep the storage building as is, as part of the sale, or you're?
It was just to be used for the personal, it was going to look the way that it does now until they decide what to do with it. Ultimately, sell it, make it a house, do whatever, but as long as they owned it, it would continue to look much like it does now. But the condos will go in the back, and this is what they'll, they'll look like.
Yeah.
And they'll go in where you see them, 30 of them.
Okay, and your other, so, basically, you're asking for a temporary non-residential use of that part of the property?
I, I suppose, but I struggle with the non-residential use characterization, because no one will be living there, right? It'll be stored personal items of the owners of the building, but it will not be used as a commercial facility, it won't be a restaurant, it won't be retail, it'll just be that.
And the other point of clarification, because it isn't specifically stated in the contract at this time, is that the city would be retaining ownership of the Little League field, and your parties would want it designated, that it would only be used as a Little League field?
Correct.
Okay.
It was always part of the agreement that the city would retain the ballfield.
Right.
It was just the condition we went through with the, the reference to it being a Little League ballfield and maintaining that use.
It being a Little League ballfield is the whole reason that the city wanted to retain it.
Correct, but I guess the, the concern from, and I don't want to speak for the city manager, but the concern was, someday in the future, we might want to do something else, and so I said, "Well, I don't want a recycling center there," for example, because that wasn't part of the deal.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel Vincent, and then.
Thank you. I don't recall, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't recall this maintenance building being part of a subdivision. I thought this whole lot, except for the field, the baseball field, was all one piece.
Well, it is all one piece now. It got subdivided into the three lots that you see on the plan, and that this building in the corner was part of the original.
Under the original agreement, we, the city, agreed to subdivide that maintenance building.
Into three pieces. So, the Little League field for you to keep.
Yep.
And then the condo, because it's a con, it's separate, a condo, you have 30 owners owning condo, and then that separate building, yes.
I just don't recall that. Maybe I'm just old.
Well, you're not. Yeah, I'm probably older than you.
Yeah.
But to the, to your point, and back to the issue of negotiation, this agreement is less than stellar. It doesn't say those specifics, but everybody went forward with that expectation.
So, if it doesn't say it, how do we come up with a subdivision?
Well, because you went through the process. You went through the planning board, and that's where.
Counsel Vincent, I'd like the city manager to chime in.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm only an alternate on the planning board. My key over there, Counsel Wither, is the main Q there, so I only fill in when he's absent.
I'm going to have the city manager fill in some gaps on this, too. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
So, this, this is, uh, this is confusing, but it is knowable, and I want to suggest that Counselor Vincent picks up on what is a, has been a challenge to speak about this project, frankly. Currently, today, this property, minus the road property, is one lot, 15 Blackwater Road, that you have chosen to sell for residential purposes. Knowing that they had an agreement in place, the, the buyers went to the planning board in order to affect this subdivision, referencing the purchase and sale agreement, to carve out the Little League field. The subdivision application also included this creation of this other lot. Now, this was done under the, this application, like all applications for, to our land use boards, are signed by the owner. This, that was done in this case. The, the city manager signed the subdivision application because it was deemed to be, you know, the will of the council to sell the land, and he was facilitating the process. The reference tonight has been to time, and the development of the subdivision, including the addition of the road, all happened in the course of planning board negotiate, planning board consideration. And as I've explained, and as you know, the, the planning board doesn't make decisions on city property. You do. So, now, this is coming back through the organic, perfectly legitimate process that it followed, and it's before you today. Mind you, what we're discussing right now is not the fact that an additional lot was created over the course of the subdivision. We're not talking about that. There's no, in my view, there's no harm in that. Where it meets your intent is the use. You intended to sell the lot minus the Little League field for residential use. Are you comfortable with the fact that through the evolution of this project, another lot was created and it might have another use? This is very important to understand as a distinction, the next thing, what I'm going to say. You went through the pains to create a new zoning for this area. The zoning, which is for residential and recreational uses. So, the underlying zoning is there. We could sell this property today, forget to create an encumbrance for residential use going forward. We could forget that, and they would still have to do a residential use or a recreational use, or convince at some time in the future a zoning board of adjustment to grant some other use that they make a good case for in front of a zoning board. The zoning here is not enough to protect your intent. The deed restriction that I'm recommending is the same one that's on the 35 units, is for residential purposes. That protects against the, a variance that could introduce a use here that might not be what you intend based on what you arrived at. So, the road issue, I think, has been explained. I think if you're comfortable with that motion, we move on from the road. I think the last thing, the only thing I need is no action if you'd like me to continue to advocate for the residential use, or take some other action to guide me on what you'd like to permit for the, for the use.
Thank you.
Your Honor, do I still have the floor?
You do. Let me just quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I heard everything. So, again, as of right now, the plans we see in place are not reality. The lot still remains as one. We have not officially sold this property, and therefore, it remains in, in whole. Our previous action was to allow for recreation or residential use on the single lot in its entirety, and that was directed to our previous city manager. In the process of the agreement, some things that may or may not have been outside of the bounds of our decision-making have occurred that we now need to provide further guidance on, including the road, which our motion currently covers, but also, if we want to take even further action to carve out this small corner lot along Wellington and Blackwater Road, as represented in the plans, for use for the developers' personal vehicles, not housing, then we would need to include more action in our motion. Counsel Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, as a business guy, I would love this, because the $400,000, I just paid for it, and I carved out this little thing over here, I'd sell that down the road for four, for a half a million to make $100,000, but the counselor in me says, and I, and I, I've been with you guys all the way, but now, we've changed the whole thing. We've, we've cut out this lot here. Remember how we started this, with all our neighbors all upset, because we were going to sell this for, I think, a lot more money, I might be wrong, to an auto repair shop, and they came out, they filled this place for hours, and they said, "We don't want an auto repair shop across from us, we're residential. We're going to hear noise all night long, they're going to work second shift." So, now, we want to carve this and subdivide this to a shop for parking cars? Come on. I'm all with you guys, but this scope has changed, and if you want to carve this out and give this piece back to the city, we'll take it. There's one counselor, and you can have the rest and give us the ballfield, we're golden. I can't see it going through, but you've seen what happens tonight. On a lot of the times, I'm overruled, but we're not going to go there. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Peppin, and then Wither.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As far as the developer coming to us, I mean, he was very upfront, basically saying he wanted to keep that for storage and use it as a workshop for maintenance of the facility. So, as far as I'm concerned, that should have been part of the council. The only concern I do have is that if he does change it into something else, an auto body shop or something like, I doubt if he would do that, because he'd upset his clients on the other end, but I'd like to have some type of control of it have to go to the planning board or some, something like that. As far as the baseball field, I, I know we're not going to put lighting up there, I, I don't think that'll ever be the intent or whatever, but I would like to see it put as recreational, and if they want to put some type of restriction on the lighting, I could turn around and say, "No big spotlights" or whatever like that, but if you want to put walkway lighting or something that, you know, around the park facility or like, for some reason, if we don't use it as a ballpark and we end up using it as a recreational area, put a, let's say, a water, a water facility there for the kids or whatever, or slides or whatever, that we could still use it as recreational. So, I would try to, try to get to that. Outside of that, I, the road, I have no problem with the road, so if that gives you any sense of, unless, unless there's something else you want to ask me, that you have a question that you want to income on it, but I.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Counsel Wither, and then Goodwin.
Just thought, we're saying, wow. Council solicited proposals for what could be done with the National Guard readiness site. Counsel Vincent is right. Among the proposals that came forward in these chambers was an auto body repair facility that was going to, in their proposal, was more money than what we're being offered in the, from the current buyers. We heard loud and clear from the neighborhood that what they wanted there was residential. In fact, this type of residential. There was another project proposed, earlier iteration of more of an apartment building, and they didn't want that. This met with the appetite of the neighborhood, and it met with my appetite as well. This area is surrounded by single-family homes, many of which have been there for a long time, and this stays with the character of what is there. So, from a planning perspective, this made sense. Do I dare share that we had an iteration of what to do with this property with the city keeping it and turning that building into a community center? And I lobbied for the fact that it would be a community center that no one would use, so why would we invest millions of dollars into it? People debated that, but that was then. We all acquiesced around this project, and we liked it, I think, because I, I think it was unanimous vote to move forward in this direction. I was a council- I was a council that favored selling the entire site and relocate the Little League field to Millennium Park. I didn't win that vote, Counsel Vincent, so I kinda know what you're like on at least one vote tonight.
Thank you.
And why didn't we do that? Because the community, very loud and emphatically said, "The Little League field, which has been here for what, 75-plus years, needs to stay there in perpetuity." So we said, "Okay, right? It's gonna stay there." So I think to the concern of, that it could be something else is, at least in the very near term and I'll say long term, it's gonna be a Little League field, right? Because that's what the community wants. There is no desire to move that. Could it be some other recreational use in the future? I suppose, but it's very unlikely, right? It's just not likely at all. I, I know that we talked about it many times, about lighting. I, I think that that is a simple request. I don't see that as an issue whatsoever. Frankly, the city isn't gonna fund it. The Little League doesn't have enough money to, to make the repairs they need to do now, never mind adding lighting that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. And by the way, this is a Little League program that has gone from six or seven teams in its heyday. It barely can support three now, right? Because there just aren't enough kids wanting to play, right? So I, I think the use is, as a Little League field is fine. I would be careful on our terminology there though, because Little League is like a brand name. It's like Kleenex, right? There are very few Little League teams left in New Hampshire. They have moved to Cal Ripken. So I might suggest a 60-foot baseball diamond, because that's what this is, or something to that effect. Branding it as Little League is maybe not what we want in an agreement if we're concerned about details. The road, that surfaced at planning board. It was thought that by conveying the road to the developer, they would improve it as part of this project. That's kinda how that all happened. Frankly, I am fine with the developer owning the road or the city owning the road. I have not worried about that either way, provided there's an easement to access the Little League field. That is a primary concern. As to the building on the corner and the subdivision of that lot, I don't have any particular concern with it being used by the owners for their storage of their boats or vehicles or whatever else they might want in there. It's no different than if I had a garage on my residential property and I wanted to store my boat in it, right? I'm not seeing that there's a difference there. I think that our zoning ordinance, that this is residential or recreational, protects our interest of what could be future in that building. I like to let that process take, take, take its course. I don't see the, the zoning board, particularly given the community fervor that came here, supporting something of, of any significant reuse there. But if it's not used for storage and wants to maintain a recreational purpose, who knows? Maybe it comes a two-story indoor pickleball facility to support the residents that live here. I'm just trying to be imaginative in what it could be. So I, I don't see the need for a deed restriction for that corner parcel, that maintenance building. I am perfectly fine with zoning, taking the effect that it needs to take there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Did you have a? Yeah, but I, right now I have, I'm gonna let the city manager jump in, Counsel Goodwin, and then I'll come over. Go ahead, city manager.
Thank you. I just want to offer the use of the maintenance facility. As this personal use, it, it means something. It means something to your zoning ordinance. And the use that's just been described or posited today is what's known as an accessory use. Those are allowed so long as you have a primary use. So the, the, the use of this facility as a personal storage site for people who live, who don't live on the site, is not an allowed use. So on the day that we close this property, I would be in a position of sending down the code enforcement officer to ensure that the use is an, a, an allowed use under your That is, so that is, I need you to be aware of that fact because we, we need to be intentional about the effect of your, of your actions in that regard. I was not aware that there was still an expectation by the developer that there would be any use restriction on the Little League field. I've gotten some feedback from the counselors, which is, which is, which is helpful. However, right now, if you were going to change the direction of your current authorizations, I would need an, I, I would need that to be another action. Otherwise, my suggestion would be, in your June 2025 resolution, you've already agreed no ball, no lighting, no ball field lighting. It, it's, for what it's worth, it's not my suggestion that a city that's been around for 300 years, without consideration, encumber its property, period. Unless there's a, a need to do it. And you haven't agreed that, in your current agreement, that there's a need to do it. So those, those two items in order to be helped.
Thank you. Counsel Goodwin, you were recognized.
Thank you, your honor. So regarding the Little League fields, the baseball field, I just wanna echo what I heard the managers just say, and I, I think it's the key point here with, in terms of restrictions for use on that city-owned parcel. City's planning to retain it and, and it's in the best interest of our constituents to not limit our future reuse of that parcel. We don't know what the future holds. Maybe there's another RFP 20 years from now because we built a new ball field and this is gonna be a phase two for housing. Maybe we need a fire station expansion, may, who knows? The future is uncertain. The city owns this land and it's in our best interest to maintain our options in the future. That doesn't mean we don't, can't be good neighbors. It is a residential area. We already wanna be good neighbors to the existing residents there. We wanna be good neighbors to the future residents there. I would encourage the developers to, you know, invest in some hedges. I can make some recommendations about some tall-growing evergreens. Maybe also a fence if they're concerned about balls. But they knew it was a recreation area, the field was there. It sounds like they want it to be recreation. They don't want it to be developed. I don't really care what they want in terms of future use. I think the city should retain its options and, and that's it. So, and we can be good neighbors and make sure that, you know, there's not light pollution, which is part of our regs anyways, and, you know, we can work on buffers, whatever, but I don't think we should be restricting our, our use on our property. And then I think the opposite is, is true with regard to the corner parcel because I, this RFP was focused on housing. And, and subdividing a parcel and then making it, basically it's mostly a commercial use and to the points Raya raised, a non-conforming use, it doesn't, does nothing for me. It is not a high val, a high value add. This is an unsightly property. We wanna see it revitalized. We wanna see housing. Keeping a, a building there to store rich guys' boats? Like, I've got some choice words. And it's, it, I don't want it. You know what I mean? Like, you know, we're, we're, is he taking this out on Lily Pond? Is he going down the Salmon Falls or is this, you know, going out to Rye Harbor and Winnipeg? Like, I, I don't care. I don't care. It should be housing. That is, that is the mandate that my constituents put me in office to do, right? Is to foresee, like, we said this was gonna be housing, it's gonna be housing. So I don't think we should be allowing other uses here unless, to the manager's point, they're accessory and beneficial to the primary use, which is housing. In this case, it's not. It's a special interest and it's commercial and to the point that Counselor Vincent raised earlier, as a subdivided parcel, they could sell this and it could become a Dunkin' Donuts. You know what I mean? And like, for all we know, like, they might already have that side agreement. They can tell us whatever they friggin' want right now. We, granted zoning is still zoning, right? So keep that in mind. But, you know, the stated use, not great. Future commercial uses, unknown. It should be residential. That's my opinion.
Thank you. All right. Before I jump to seconds, is there anyone who hasn't yet gone that's interested for first? Go ahead, Counsel Barry.
Sorry not to cut in, but I agree, I don't wanna limit our use to what the ball field is at this time because again, in, again, looking forward to 20 years, again, we might want to do residential there. You know, I think there already is a lot of restrictions around lighting, so I, for me, that's not a big concern because, you know, they have certain criterias around that. So I don't wanna limit that at all. I'm not for deed restrictions because I think that's where it gets very cumbersome. We had one recently, we had to overturn as a council because it became a problem and we couldn't remember why it was put on in the first place. I'm not a fan of them. So I think there's two options in my head. Either this goes back to one lot and not having that parcel carved out, or if they want to carve that out, maybe we take that away from the sale. That could be part of where the negotiation goes. But I think if it's gonna be carved, it needs to stay at the intended use.
Thank you. Others who haven't come yet? All right. We're gonna go to seconds, Counsel Gibson and then Vincent.
I don't know why the planning board got into subdividing. I mean, the only concern to me would have been the ball field. I don't know why they got involved in the road. My basic thing is, this lot, the intention of the council was to sell it for residential. And we're not gonna change the zoning to comply with the use that they're discussing. It's a, whatever it's residential, recreational is the zoning. So I guess what I would be telling the city manager is carve out the ball field as we intended and leave the rest as one piece to be used for residential uses. I don't know if that's clear.
Thank you. Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, your honor. Is it even legal to cut out a piece of property and make it a non-conforming use and sell it to somebody? I was gonna be an attorney, but I decided to be a firefighter instead. I knew I'd get a laugh from my ex-captain over here. That's a joke. So look, you know, I'm sad where these guys are. They've got money involved in this. They're invested. They want an answer. I get it. And I wanna try to help them and try to let, try to give it to my fellow counselors also to, to kinda give them some direction because I do have good direction. I just think that you should separate this and make this part of the original agreement and the problem solved. You can have the road, you can deal with the Little League field and just take this subdivided little lot out and I think we're all happy, but I'm just one. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do I get an opportunity to summarize or no?
You can have, well, just kidding. You can have questions directed to you and you can answer them, but we did give you your five minutes in the beginning, which was typically out of order.
So I won't get to address some of the misconceptions that are already out there?
If folks have questions, they could happily ask them.
Already has been.
I'm gonna turn to my counselor, Counsel Barry.
It already has been subdivided legally?
Please stay in order. Thank you.
And nothing was appealed?
Please stay in order. I do not wanna have to gavel you.
I'm gonna ask a question.
But it's already a legal subdivision. It's already done.
Again.
I'm gonna ask a question about something that I'm not necessarily saying is my position or that I would support it, but hypothetically, if we removed this line of subdivision, would the owner be able to store things there temporarily because that would be an accessory use if it were part of the lot for which the primary use was residential?
City manager?
I would like to make a, a suggestion in an effort of, of simplifying the, the policy issue here. This is an unfortunate process, one that I hope to never repeat. But we're here now and in good faith, this group has gone forward to the planning board. They've, they've worked with city staff and they have moved forward. You know, the concept of moving away from your agreement right now or, excuse me, the concept of having them go back to planning board for another very, frankly, expensive and time-consuming process that could happen by changing the plan, I think you have the same effect. I, I wouldn't worry the council with changing any lines here. What you care about is use. If you restrict it to a residential use, just like they've agreed that this other one will be, they have the same restriction. If they make a decision to go back to a planning on their own dime and their own time without the pressures of this agreement, well, they can do that work. You really, I, my suggestion would be not to worry what their needs are, what their intended uses are. You don't have to worry about it if you, you deed the property with a residential restriction.
Does that answer your question, Counsel Parity-Cottin-Zaro?
Yes, it does. And, and just a comment from my memory, I do recall the previous city manager coming to us and talking about the lights. And I, I recall it being mentioned that it would be used, my personal understanding of that mention though, was that it was temporary and that it was for, you know, like while we're working out all of this stuff. So I did not have an understanding.
To the outbuilding?
Yes, that the use for storage in the outbuilding was something that was going to be permanent. So I, like many other counselors, I think this should be residential.
All right. Other discussion? Counsel Vincent?
I wanna make a motion to table this.
It makes a motion to table this item under others? Need a second?
I'll second.
All right. Counsel Goodwin, seconds. This is a non-debatable motion. If you're in favor of the motion to table, you'll say by saying yes. If you're opposed, you'll say by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
No.
Parity-Cottin-Zaro?
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order, real quick, sorry. We already had a motion on the table. What happens with that before we go?
This is a higher order motion.
Okay. Sorry, just wanted clarity.
Yeah, thank you for asking. I appreciate it. So we have a yes and a no. I'm sorry.
No.
Micho?
No.
Witham?
No.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
No.
Barry?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
All right. Motion fails. Discussion still exists. We're gonna, let's try to get close to the end here. Counsel Gibson and then Witham are, we're also running very, very close to our 10 o'clock time limit. Counsel Gibson?
I understand that apparently the subdivision has already been approved?
The subdivision has been approved. It has not been recorded.
Okay.
And the property has not been sold.
We go ahead, sell the property with the residential usage and cut out the ball field. I don't know the right way to word.
Right. So I'm, I, Mr. Mayor, I, my apologies if I didn't make this clear. The, there are no remaining issues with regard to moving forward with the Little League field, as I've understood it. The subdivision carves it out and we, in the drafting, have agreed not to light the ball field. That's the only restriction we've put on ourselves because you guys asked for it, you, excuse me, the council, in your last resolution. Counsel Gibson, was, is that responsive to your comment?
Yeah.
Because if they wanna use that part of the building, the property, as storage temporarily, they can get a, a variance to allow it.
They, Counsel Gibson, they could. They could also go back to the planning board, change the subdivision line and make it an accessory use for the people who live on the lot, the 30, the 30 unit, the unit owners. That would be, that would be allowed. It could have a storage use.
So I don't know the correct wording at this point, but my proposal would be continue with the, close out the sale with the zoning intact.
Right. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just summarize? So what I will, what I would do, if the city council voted tonight to approve this sample motion, the effect would be I would work with our council, who happens to be here tonight, Laura Spector Morgan, and I thank you very much for being here. I would work with council to craft the documents and the effect would be to retain our Little League ball field, no lighting, we'd be agreeing forever not to put lighting on it for ball fields. And then I would continue to do what I've been doing, which is there needs to be residential deed restrictions on the resulting other two lots because that, that is what I have seen as responsive to the council, absent any other action. So if you are in agreement with that, the, you could, the simple, the simple motion would be the one to just permit me to sell that land as expressed in the motion.
The motion we have already proposed that we're currently working on.
A long time ago.
Yes. All right, Counsel Witham, you are recognized and then we're getting close on 10, guys.
Yeah, I'll try to be quick here. So let me first, I'd like to make a motion to allow, suspend council rules to go beyond 10 o'clock to finish our order of business this evening.
Need a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Peppin. Again, the motion before us is to go beyond 10 o'clock to suspend, suspend council rules to go beyond 10 o'clock. Seconded by Counsel Peppin. We don't need discussion. Let's just vote on this. If you're in favor, you're going to say aye. If you're opposed, you're going to say nay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. Thank you.
So I'm glad we've gone through all these conversations. It has been extremely helpful to me to wrap my head around it. I'm perfectly fine with what the city manager said. The intended use is residential. That is true. I thank you for the clarity around the fact that this would be an accessory use if they kept cars, boats, whatever in there. I agree with Counsel Gibson that they could get relief from that through zoning board action if they so chose or relief through some other planning board action. So I'm happy with that. I agree with the Little League Field, no lights and just keep it the way that it is in the, in the, in the current draft sale agreement. As for the road, I am fine with, with that being conveyed. Just a little bit on that, at the planning board level, the road was a very complicated piece. Eversource, Public Service of New Hampshire, I think was actually listed as on the property. They actually owned a portion of the road. We owned a portion of the road. It was complicated. It took a lot of action at the planning board level to get through that. It was confusing as all get out as I remember. And the thought was this is a short stretch of road to the Little League Field and why would the city want to own it just to plow it and maintain it, give it to the developers? So that's kind of how that got conveyed over. So I'm on board with what the city manager recommends here tonight and is the intent of the motion.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay. We will move on to the voting phase.
Actually, one question.
Okay, go for it.
I apologize.
You're good.
To retain access to the Little League Fields here, this road, would we need an easement included or?
Counsel Gibson, yes. And that has been, that's, that is part of your June 2025 motion to reserve rights for access for that, that roadway. To access the Superfund site because this piece is a portion of the Superfund site.
Okay.
To access the monitoring wells that will remain on the property to be sold and to access the Little League ball field.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on. So if you are in favor of the motion, again, which would, is specific to the suggested motion, which would authorize the city manager to include the sale of a portion of Tax MAP 22 Lot 50, which includes a portion of the right of way known as Parkview Terrace Crest Drive Blackwater LLC and is shown as a part of Lot 2210 in a two-lot subdivision, 15 Blackwater Road dated December 2024, my gosh, it's a mouthful, I apologize, which is essentially motion-specific to allowing the road to be included. You will say by saying yes. You're opposed, you will say by saying no. City Clerk, or I just want to make sure, is that clear with everybody? Okay. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
No.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Katzenaro?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Right. Motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right. Brings us to item E, which is, let's see where we vote, on Government Operations Suggested Rule Change, City Council Meeting Order of Business Trial. I'll defer to the city manager as he had mentioned earlier. Some things from his manager's report were included at this time. So city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. Counsel Micho did a great job summarizing what was a very good conversation at the Government Operations Committee. The, the short of this is we, having three more meetings left in the year, had the opportunity to trial a revised order of your meetings. And they thought it was worth, worthwhile to try and they're recommending to you that we, we do do that. A resulting agenda is in your packet about what the new meeting would look like. It's, it's not drastically changed, but it's, it's for the intent of trying to better serve the public. There's a few examples here that I would just summarize and with attention to the hour, I will just be very brief. First, there's a, where there's an adjustment to the order where you have presentations. This is in order to provide more opportunities to, to explain and contextualize the council actions that are going to come up in the meeting and to help explain ordinances. That happened, you know, it's also an opportunity to have more ceremonial guests that are present be recognized earlier in the meeting so they're given the courtesy of going, being able to go home before too much more of the meeting progresses. Relatively innocuous. There's also an opportunity with this changed order to have the city manager report go before the standing committees. And that's not because your city manager is impatient. That's because I, I have found myself thinking that I can be more helpful to you if I cause, if I help the chairs by teeing up those action items ahead of them so that they, we don't have to repeat ourselves when I get my opportunity later in the meeting. I think it's an opportunity to streamline and assist the meeting and its flow. Feedback on the consideration of residue, resolutions and ordinances. We have this, we've been using this practice of new business and unfinished business. I have studied a lot of your meetings for the past well before I've come, come to work for you and this was the hardest thing for me to understand, the difference between new business and unfinished business and where these readings come. What we have discussed is the idea of making one section for considering resolutions and ordinances and be more express in mentioning first reading, second reading, that sort of thing. I think it will help us for clarity and, and transparency. There are, an observation was made that we're the only community I know of that has two opportunities for public comments and two dedicated sections for counselor comments. The discussion at the committee level was let's try doing one and one, knowing that there are other opportunities for counselors to express themselves throughout the meeting and again, to do so on a trial basis. So that is my effort just to explain what the recommendation is from Government Operations and the, the opportunity, if you would like to move forward tonight, is to vote to adopt the revised order of business as presented to be effective October 2025. Per your rules, which are traditionally adopted every two years in order to run your meetings, a two-thirds vote is needed to amend the rules during the course of your council term. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Counsel Parity Katzenaro?
Understanding that this is a trial basis, the last three meetings, the goal is to make these shorter, I would like to make a motion to vote to adopt the revised order of business as presented to be effective October 20th, 2025 for that pilot period and to approve the enclosed meeting schedule, which is under F.
Double motion. I love a double motion. All right. So the motion before us tonight is to adopt the revised order of business as presented to be effective October 20th, 2025 and to adopt the council meeting schedule for 2026, seconded by Counsel Goodwin. Discussion, dare I even say the words? Counsel Goodwin?
Just very quickly, at the committee level, if I could just zoom out, the manager's recommendations here, I think, were very well taken and what I really appreciate about the proposed trial is his outside perspective. I mean, we've all been in the weeds of our own structure, our old manager, you know, I think the best thing to have is an editor, right? You sort of add things over time, it gets a little cumbersome and having a fresh perspective coming and being like, okay, well, we can, we can tighten this up a bit. We're, this is a meeting for us to conduct business. It's a, a meeting for us to be able to connect with the public on Channel 22 and in person, but we can put reasonable bounds around it and I think this does a great job of, of that and it's a, it's a trial basis. The other thing I will note that was a revelation to me was that council rules are typically adopted following the seating of a new council. So when I was sworn in office, and I think this is probably true for all of us, we sort of were given a welcome packet with like, here's all the ordinances and here's the rules and this is what it is. But the way I think it's more typically done, and this was again a learning, is that when you are sworn in, you adopt the rules. So you are given the package and sort of go through and, and say, okay, does this body for the next two years agree to these rules? So every council sitting under the, the rules that they adopted, which I think is a really good way to get buy-in and make sure that our rules are current to our need. So I'm just flagging that as, as a potential expectation for future councils and I thought was a good note.
I appreciate that. Yeah, it was, to be perfectly honest, it was a bit of practice that I had just been familiarized with as being a counselor and hadn't thought about when I became mayor. So I'm excited to try it out this next term. Yes, Counsel Vincent, you recognize?
I just want to comment. The rules that we're currently under, that we conduct our business under have been going on for a while. They kept us out of hot water to explain or to, for an example, you have people that come here and that haven't heard about things. The reason why we do things the way we are is because the past, and I'm going to say past, city manager who went to a number of trainings that we sent him to, every month sometimes, Texas, California, over here, Pennsylvania, he, he grouped that information and came back and structured with the council the best way to proceed. I just want to let you know that it wasn't Ken Vincent that's had, you know, a dabble here or there with the council. It was a guy who had 20-plus years who structured this. Now, am I saying the current city manager wants to change it? No. Is it a good idea? I don't know. All I know is it kept us out, it kept us in the legal perspective of a guy who had 20 years. He set it up. You want to change it one night for an, to, to try it? I'm not for it, but I'm not for a lot of things, I guess. Thank you.
Discussion? Yes, Counsel Cameron?
Hi. I was just going to say, let's just try it. Give it, it's only on a trial basis and having sat on the committee as well, it kind of streamlines everything a little bit better, makes it run a little bit smoother. And it may even shorten the meeting here and there. Who's, who's to say? Depending on how much people have to say, but give it a whirl, folks. You might like it.
Thank you. We're going to, Counsel Witham and Barry.
Yeah, thanks. Certainly worth a try. I, I appreciate the fresh perspective. It's always good for all of us. I don't see these as radical changes whatsoever. The fact that the, the city manager would go before committee chairs to report out will shorten our committee. The idea of presentations is something that I've always liked, particularly when we have like zoning amendments and things of that nature. I appreciate it when, you know, the planning director would come up and provide comment around that. So I think that that is super valuable, just to arm us with better information prior to taking votes. So I don't see this as radical changes and certainly worth a try.
Thank you. Counsel Barry?
I just had a quick question and maybe a suggestion to edit the motion. Since this is on a trial, can we maybe schedule when this would come back before us to vote on it again for permanent?
Yeah, I think the hope is that we'll trial it until our new council is inaugurated and then we'll have, I would say, either a workshop or at our first meeting, a run of the new rules that we'll go through.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we wanted to enact before a new council because, okay.
No, we want, we want the new council to be engaged and involved in the process of making their rules. It will, in theory, be their rules. These are ours until the end of our terms, which is the 1st of January. So, good question, though. Other discussion? All right, seeing none. If you're in favor of the vote, remember this does include the meeting schedule as well. You'll say by saying yes. If you're opposed, you'll say by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Parity Katzenaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Unexcused.
Gibson?
Yes.
All right. Rules are adopted and meeting schedule is adopted. Great. That cuts us through to comments by visitors on item 17. Summers or City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into debate with any persons, the mayor, city council members, city manager or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Thank you. Say your name and ward in which you live.
Richard Brooks, Ward 1. I didn't make it here tonight. Work ran late. Trying to watch on my phone. That worked horribly. I had to come down and actually watch in person so I could hear stuff. Probably my phone the problem, not anything else. One of the things that I really wanted to speak to is all this discussion about the property on Green Street and the tax relief on that. You know, it's interesting building, it's industrial use, probably a reason why it was sitting vacant. It's kind of hard to turn into a residential use. At the same time, you get zoning that restricts uses. So sometimes, you know, never mind the covenant that was on it by the city previously. So you look at all these uses, all these zoning regulations, they really stifle what businesses can do, what residential uses might be. You know, and I want to make this clear that I'm up here speaking as a resident, not as a historic district member or zoning board member, but all of these experiences of me being involved in the city make me see that all this zoning plays a huge part on what happens in the city and a lot of times it restricts what happens. So I really want to encourage that we need to make changes on zoning. This is one of the things that I've taken as a goal of myself. That's why I'm on the Mayor's Housing Task Force. Thank you for placing me on that. I'm on the Historic District Commission. I'm on the zoning board. And all of this is very focused on zoning. I, I feel I have a little bit of influence there. I'm not going to say I'm an expert. I'm still learning stuff and listening to what was spoken here tonight, I'm still learning. But sometimes when I hear the conversation up here, I think that council doesn't always understand zoning as much as they need to.